Like a director say your life breathe.
I've been texting you. I can't hit the button and be in there. They just need to work, look at it instead of talking to planning commission.
You know, I was an Elon major until I wasn't. I love more economic classes, but the higher I got, and I do not like this. You know, I like hearing the analysis, but I don't want to do it. And then one of my professors was teaching in Greek and asking in Russian, and I said, I'm joking, but that's what I felt. In fact, my study mark at A's. I was constantly explaining how this worked and how this worked, and he understood.
Well, there's only three of us here right now, but past four o'clock, so we're gonna start the work session. I agree. Alright, we're gonna start with some discussion. Our accounting firm, Parker Forican James, appreciate you coming to visit with us. Step up and talk, and I think Commissioner faculty, do you want to kind of introduce?
Yeah, actually Leslie was going to. Leslie? Uh, we're in, uh, Leslie. What we're gonna do is we're gonna kind of just discuss a little bit about what we've discussed with Alex. And one of the recommendations, Jason can probably touch on that, but one of the recommendations of our accountants. And they basically are saying that we really cheat a grant writer and manager because of the fact that we're not doing so well with managing those grants. We're not getting all the grants, we're not, you know, there's just so many things that's not happening. So, um, Leslie, when Alex told me, or she already talked to Leslie, and Leslie brought it up to me, and I'm turning over to him now. It's getting very loud.
Yeah, so we deal with a lot of cases that are more similar size to you and your company. And we see cases where they'll have their managers in place, it helps them with compliance, but also they'll, you know, obtain more grants, that kind of thing. We're offering, uh, you know, this one, those things where maybe brainstorming on this. We may not be the right fit for you, providing some services like this. We would be happy to let our services help you, or possible, if you're later, we would pass time, and we would be able to dedicate some time and effort towards the county, and, uh, she doesn't work for us full time right now, so she has time, you know, this would be one of her main projects, and she works with, if you guys choose to, to bring us on. But she would really be helping you with getting the grants, having a more centralized process. Seems like right now, the different department heads, commissioners, um, are working on obtaining grants for the county. And then, you know, she may not be aware as the grant writer, um, aware of the different compliance requirements, finding those compliance requirements, and what to do to be fully compliant, and also how to communicate it, so that, you know, the rest of the financial team knows how to to deal with the deficit credits, right? And so, I'm not entirely certain, uh, what this would look like, if you were to engage us, other than, we were out to make sure, and one of my other managers had, we would collaborate, and you'd have kind of that brainstorming theme, and we would, um, look to get your grants more centralized, have a central list of all the grants that you have, and talk with each of the people that are obtaining these grants about what are the compliance requirements. And if they simply don't know, then they will help with finding what those compliance requirements are, help me anything to have. Now, when it comes to grant writing, uh, that's not our forte, and, um, that's not really what I leadership with this. I think that you, your position, you really ought to have maybe, um, a grant manager type position. Maybe it's not the whole time, maybe another two days. But, you know, with your clerk and treasurer, I mean, it's like, hey, you know, they're doing their best to keep, keep the, I think, to go, and adding one more layer on their heads, it's probably not the way I actually would like to do. Cause this might, this aspect might get neglected, um, but if you can find somebody in the organization, somebody in the organization that'll be more compliant, and help write grants, you know, that's what we would look for. If we bring, if we decided to bring us on, this would be a short term thing, for this type of service that we provide, um, it's not really a long term business, uh, so it has a time to be now, and the first thing you learn is that you should get a system towards this project, to help you guys, and get a system that, you know, don't be, maybe, maybe somebody, or you decide to try higher society to kind of help something. But it's definitely not the system that internal control they have. All the different department heads working on the grant, and not reporting to someone, uh, about what's going on, and that kind of thing. So, that's really just.
Is this an hourly rate proposal?
Yeah.
And you guys charge a standard hourly rate, regardless of the person working, or is it tiered?
Right, right, so right now, we do with our, we have another engagement with you, we have one standard hourly rate, and that's essentially a composite rate. So we have some people with a lower, um, standard billing rate, and then like, ours has a higher standard billing rate. And it's that rate, so between with you, our other engagement with you, uh, with this one, because essentially just be working with Sheila, and with myself and Alex, uh, the rate is a little bit higher than our ordinary, I think, state, uh, partnership. Because we wouldn't be able to have any, uh, large staff helping this project.
So what's, uh, if you could give me your best, and how much time?
Right, if the hundred fifty dollars, uh, the current rate we have with the other side, yeah, at the end of the year, it's like three thousand. As far as a, expected number of hours, we really don't do this on paper. I think that, that comes down to what you guys want, and what you guys need. I think that if we start with having meetings, um, together, and trying to understand, how to, you're actually have, working on those grants, uh, writing them, and trying to gather them together, but I really don't have a system for you, um, and again, this is looking at, from my perspective, a short term thing, trying to help you get a little more of a system in place, and then move on, so. Sure, well, we can, uh, we could, we would prefer not to, but we can help with that kind of thing, um, if necessary, um, giving some tips, that's not where we are skilled, I mean, again, it's like, you know, this idea is like, hey, must bring in its attention, by all means, like, okay, and I think, uh, looking for somebody is more qualified in this area, is setting my side in. You know, we have a background in internal control, and how processes should work, uh, within organizations, to see, you know, we're on it, six counties, and then we serve you guys, helping you get ready for the law, and, right? And so we see how this works in other counties, how it can work a little bit better in this system currently, um, and so we can be able to provide. Some pretty good guidance, but otherwise, it's not our expertise, I mean, I have a lot of RFPs on them, and that's not, it's not the same, so, um, again, it's like, hey, there's two aspects.
Can I ask you a question? So how many current contracts do you have in the state, um, with grant currently?
Zero. And I think that's where, how, we may not be the right person for you to hire for this, but it is, they have, I think, maybe, and.
With them for a long, several years, um, where we met, where I was working as an consultant to a client needed an auditor in-house, and I was doing there, um, helping them with their contract management. And so, I do have some background in contract management, um, and helping organizations be successful, and now I think they're in contracts, and developing strategic plans, and, um, tools to have in place, and then training their staff on how to continue on in use of those tools, so that I can step down, so on the time that's actually going, on the two reasons, and, um, the beginning of my contract would be, um, you know, quite a bit more than the upfront level, I learned about what their needs are, and then I developed a process for them, trained them on the system, and then stepped down, and just come in as a consultant, as they learned how to use the system, and making sure that they were efficient to the process. So I have some background in estateing with grant and contract management at the state at federal level, um, but it is, um, more related to the accounting and financial management of the contract, so, just to be clear. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I'm just trying to get around to talk about terms, it's just like, it's hard.
It is difficult because it, 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 it depends on how many contracts you have, how many different places you're gonna be working with, but, um, it takes more time at the beginning than it did, and to be, to be clear, I will step down as of the end of the year, so, it would be something that we hope to get in place, and get full learning, and efficient, and very short, very short time. Yeah, yeah. And I'm not big enough for the years, so.
It's not, it's not our specialty, yeah. So, what I'll do is, if you want, if you want, if you want, if you want, um, yeah. Take your time with that, and, um, if you want, if you want, we can talk about that. I prefer that definition, if you want, in terms of if you want, there to be some sort of schedule, or some sort of, otherwise, if you want, we'll come with a schedule for you. We appreciate you guys, we appreciate you as a client, um, that's what we do, and all the work that we have with you, um, you know, and so we appreciate, whatever, if you wanna do this, right, we'll work hard, that's just what we've always done, uh, no, that's okay, that's okay.
I think the common causes is absolutely out of my mind, we need help, sorry, I don't, as if different questions were asking that, if we don't want to come across this, um, we could give you some help with grant management, in my mind.
I have a question, are you on a need procurement? Are you listed for grant managing? Okay, alright, so, and I don't know if you do either, I was trying to, first of all, to say, I need to ask you to put it out, for, for, unless it involves one of these situations, of our article.
Yeah.
Of appetite, that's my thought.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, I'm not much of a salesman, so.
That's helpful, uh, sounds like, right now, there's not really that idea of how many hours you might spend.
There's really not, I mean, I think if it's like, hey, you know, if you wanna sit down, we could collaborate, like, should we, we have a meeting once a week, uh, for three, four hours, maybe to be first, you have, you know, meetings for six, seven weeks, first, you know, three weeks, or something like that, you see where we're at, and what else your needs are, um, we're not trying to get into, like, even after that, this is gonna be a little bit of a thing, there's not, you know, we just know, it appears to be something, some guidance, some sort of system, tracking the grants, and you should give it a control, go back there, um, so you don't have the findings such as audits, so, um, if you wanted to find that, 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 that's the hardest thing, my problem is.
Okay, thank you.
If that's it, uh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we appreciate you coming up, and, uh, we'll look at this, and get back to you.
You too.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Looks like email this, dot drop off.
This is just a discussion, kind of preliminary, every review, amount, green, area, plan, their findings, and conclusions, whether I think you would forward it on to the planning board, planning commission.
When did you get in the video? You know, you could just stop the presentation now. That might be the hundred thousandth time, we're good, Michael, sorry.
Hi, I'll keep going, well, trying to do that. Uh, so I'm Lance Tyrell, with, uh, I'm a D C I expert, been working on this for about a year, a little over a year now, for about a great eighty years in various places, and, uh, I grew up here, I'm a current resident of Orange, so I'm familiar with the area, very.
Would you say your name?
Lance Tyrell. Um, yeah. Probably your teacher. Yeah, but, really, I have some, um, yeah, it's been, it's been very interesting, and it's been a process, it's been, um, we could do the chair of, so, um, so, I don't know, so, this is everybody, I don't know if you've had that before, so, make sure everybody got that, um, if not, we'll make sure you have it. So there's two plans, one for Mount Grand, but we did the plan, I did them, combined, we're really thinking about how to all work together, it's keep them in, in, kind of distinguishable, unique towns, but also, um, but also, to find, to get, so, connect this, so, so, so. So you find all those things there, um, the, you know, so, 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 the plan, um, the, you know, kind of, trying to set the stage of this thing, is we know where else it's going, it's, it's, there's a lot of demand, um, there's, so, we gotta, and, and, the, um, you know, the way, the deal is, is how do we transition from a rural area to a small town? And that's, to me, that's, how do we capture rural corral, to organize a way that it creates something nice, where we're actually proud of? And it makes things better, even, I think, most people would say, wish we could stop, close the gates, and, and, that's just a, so, how do we make that, that's small? Um, the, this, you know, we need the, we need the tax base, you know, proper, we all know, we're, we're, a lot of people frustrated, and want to change, so how do we bring in some, or use some other ways to, the reverse, but I've actually faced a little over the, whatever, that's, that's a big part of it as well, so, I don't know, I don't know strategy to enhance that. Um, so.
What's the difference, you got two different files, one's L R, and the other one's R?
Yeah, the L R is just a smaller reservation, um, yeah, so, if you even, that would be, um, yeah, so, just gonna walk through this, just to get it up, but, just kind of the section there, um, you know, if you just did this, did this analysis, where we were, you know, the things like flooding things are, and, obviously, uh, and slow open, other than, you know, seeing, slow open, those things are all very, if they want to show on, what happens to, so, there is, there is particularly like people who do, and slides, and that. Those things are all very, if they want to show on, what happens to, so there is, there is particularly like people who end sites and then they're going to be, um, and suppose that flooding is happening. And, um, and then going through things like, uh, the development, like, uh, place, um, a lot of big, important, um, pieces. I already have a little bit of a natural land, so we're, so we're kind of, sets a lot of the parameters for what we're doing, what we're writing. It's a particular base of what's at ease with, uh, with God, with Rollins Ranch, a lot of these things are feeling up to speed, you know, limited spaces are there. And then part of the, um. See if it helps you.
Which is.
Yeah, that's true. Um, and then, let me go to some guidance principles for, and this way, uh, we did a survey, and I don't know if you guys are, a flyer, to look at the link survey, and everybody's getting some, um, where, we asked to survey and this, um, like, these, uh, results, where these are, these guidance principles, what we heard, what we heard, maybe, and to kind of assess the stage of where the land is working. And make sure that, that something we go back to, to these landmines, make sure we're trying to hit these goals as close as we can.
What kind of resources did you get?
We got, no, no, we got over two hundred, almost three hundred, which was roughly, it's roughly like seven percent of the population, which is a little higher, a little higher, usually, for community-wise. And then usually it's five, six, seven. And then Peterson was about, basically, the, 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 the. Let's see. So then. Trying to, I think you're, yeah, yeah. Um. So then we can kind of get into the framework anyway, so that kind of assess the stage for, then we get into, how does this look? Um, kind of physical.
Okay, this is a good topic.
Yeah, so. You have to have that. And then, so. So the framework, Lance, it's really, like, the stage actually, like, here, how they, they, kind of, the main centers of activity in town, they do, so, you know, we're looking at a little base in the future, my man, for, for, there, we've got, which, which, you know, tends to be big, they're probably, a lot of, a lot of, they're pretty far future. Um, you'd go out, it's, it's very closed off, really tight, you know, it's kind of a little interaction with, 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 with Peterson, as far as that goes. And how does, how do you, do you interact with each other, is a question, the different towns in the country, and, uh, it kind of hard, creating a small, you know, in a hard, uh. Here, we'll get to it. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to addition, we're going to guide, guide principles. Alright. So here, here's the, uh, map, map, so, so, how do all these things work together? How do we think about this? This stuff, this is kind of settle on, these, these, these kind of important areas, I mean, Peterson works, two centers back, back to, 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 in a smaller, quite, quite, this would be a hard, hard place, where it focuses, sort of, where, where, so. So this map, I can, really, really try to, look, look, like, say, kick, that, that, to, but also, fairly, bubble diagram, this point, um, how we want to space, so, so. Another thing is, and this is, uh, the future, uh, the future interchange, traffic loop, they're actually going to Peterson as well, and connect, create a basic loop, connecting current, Peterson with, uh, the future interchange, mountain green. And creating a road, and it's through, all the way, um, like I said, creating. So my, so the future, I think this is probably, kind of, the meaning of what comes out of this, so, spend a little more time on this. So, if you can see on this, if you're looking at your screen, it's forty-three. The, the areas are, just no base in Washington, like, so those are, already have a developed agreement, you're already kind of locked in to what will happen there. In the pink, that's, that's kind of the area that, that's, that's nine springs, plan being like that right there. This plan, this, this plan, this area, plan doesn't really take a stand to the way what happens there, it's, uh, you know, it recognizes, it recognizes an opportunity that there's some, some development, um, and what's appropriate, you know, it could, it could determine this, the current processes going through. And then the yellow is what we call the, the mountain green, Peterson, where the river, where the plan is, um, in this area. So this, this, that's, to, to what we're calling different future landmine classifications, so these aren't so many districts, they're not, um, you know, nothing beyond title, they're just, looking at the different areas, it's kind of identified what's the appropriate development, vision for each of these areas. So, the biggest one, see, there is the yellow, that's what we call, we call the mountain residential. Um, this is intended to be, kind of, it's, 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 mostly based on something similar to the cottonwoods, we're, we're trying to not put just like a lane in it, one acre, one unit acre, one unit acre by acres.
Washed at the exact same repetitive thing. We want to encourage like a dynamic, interesting community. But it's but this is intended to be a single-family neighborhood development.
Lance, is there a reason? It looks like we have a little bit of a bigger area in the in Peterson than Mountain Green on this. The Valley Residential, is it really basically because the fact that there's more valley area in Peterson than Mountain Green?
Yeah, and and part of the fact is the when you so the valley stuff above in Mountain Green shown here is above the old highway. And down below is where the town center will go and some some flex classifications that we'll get to, they're a little more flexible. They have some commercial options down off the bench. So that's why it's a little misleading because there's a couple more zones that will.
So so that's not the old highway then, just between the upper and the lower area?
No, so yeah, so this is the freeway. And then the old highway runs kind of along border that color.
Okay, so that question then, that major portion or larger portion is in Peterson?
Yeah, the large portions of Peterson.
And so what's that? And so basically that little white area between the two little dot, big dots of brown, is that more of the town center?
Yeah, that's kind of our vision of of Villar Center. Again, and to be clear, we're not, we're not, and we'll get to, actually, this is the next one, so I can go there. So this, this is what we call Flex Neighborhood. So the point of these, this zone is to find some areas within Mountain Green and Peterson that can allow for a little more density. We're thinking something like townhomes. And again, not all townhomes, there's, there's language in here that says that's not the intent, is to just maximize them everywhere. But how can we find little pockets and and in places that have good access? So all these places are close to freeway interchanges, assuming that the future Trappers interchange goes into Peterson. And also low, pretty low visibility impacts to existing residents here. So these are the places that we could find that that met those qualifications to add a little bit more density, a little, a few more housing options. One of the big things we found in the study was just the home prices in Mountain Green and Peterson are. We did this last summer, this this study, so it's, it maybe come down a little bit, but the average home price was $900,000 in this area. And even though the incomes were one of the highest in the state also, it's more where there's a bigger gap than the state average. So it's more unaffordable for people who currently live in Mountain Green and Peterson than state average, even though we have high incomes. The housing prices are so high right now. So that, that's part of this is just trying to find place like really smart, thoughtful, strategic ways to integrate these into the community without creating, you know, these big, you know, we're not trying to create harem and out here or something like that. In fact, we go into the kind of end of this document has a lot of language and there's whole sections on how to design this and what to do and what not to do to create what we call like gentle density, a very soft way to integrate into the community without changing, doing minimal impact like the character of the small town feel. The next one, the town center mixed use area. So I think this is pretty, pretty straightforward. This is long been planned for the town center area. Nothing really changes in that regard. So we can kind of, I think, skip by that pretty quick. And there's, there's actually a little more, a whole section on this about how to design it, how to integrate it into the community, how to create like the type of town center that it's walkable, that's friendly, that really kind of the town can celebrate and not just a bunch of commercial uses with parking lots, et cetera. So. This flex commercial area, this is that, I think it's called Canyon View Resident, or that a development that's already in place, that's already plotted. That's essentially not changing, but that's a pretty small zone there. So we're kind of getting where we're allowing some commercial uses. And so here's where, you know, we're trying to, again, diversify the tax base, allow some, where's the appropriate places that we could allow for this, you know, more commercial uses and what's the right scale and type of thing. So this area is in orange, we're calling Flex Commercial Residential. It goes from the edge of the town center, stays under the old highway and and just bordered by the interstate here. So this, we looked at this as a good opportunity to provide, to be a place where a lot of stuff could happen that a community could need, but but we're not sure what that is, you know, maybe we're not, this might not happen for 30 years or 50 years. So we don't want to lock it into one, you know, say this can only be residential or this should only be commercial. We want to allow for some flexibility to to adapt to what the community needs with some parameters around it. So. So we allow, like I said, we allow for some residential and commercial. If if the, there's also a distinguishing factor in here. If it's the type, if if a commercial user wants to come in and it's a more town center appropriate commercial, it's a restaurant or a smaller, you know, retail space or something, we want to focus that into the town center and create a real vibrant town center that has those uses. But if it's maybe something a little more auto oriented or or needs a bigger footprint or just doesn't quite fit with the town center vision, then this orange area, this flex area could be a place where that could be appropriate. This light industrial one, this is basically the, not really changing anything from what's already there. It's that, that kind of mixture of commercial uses there near the airport. So we're not really expanding that, you know, the, the, what the big thing with here is just the limited access. You have to go through a residential road to get there. We don't want big trucks. We don't want to expand this zone, but I think there's a lot of good reason to keep a zone like this. It provides a lot of, you know, kind of a, a home base for a lot of local businesses and things like that. So we want to keep it, but not really expand it for, for traffic reasons. This blue zone we call Business Park, this is kind of that area surrounding Browning. And the idea here is to basically kind of build on what Browning has done is this business center that's in a campus-like environment that has a lot of emphasis on the, on the green space and and really blends in and takes advantage of the natural landscape there. So this, this could be a flux of a big variety of types of uses. It's if it's the character of what the building looks like, what the campus looks like, that'll be the defining characteristic of how this area comes together. And then what we're calling River Residential. This is, you know, this is, a lot of this is in the sensitive areas, the, the flood plain, not all of it's in flood plain, but a large portion of it is. And so what we're trying to do here is is call it out as a separate zone, or not a zone, but a classification. And encourage that, you know, there, there are areas in here that could be developed, but we would rather see that, that those units moved and transferred to a different parcel where it's more appropriate. So that's while we're, while we're recognizing that something could be built here, we're trying to encourage that to be moved up to, you know, more appropriate locations for, for development and preserve this area, which would be, which is, you know, a really great kind of entrance into the community. Could provide great public spaces as development occurs. That's something we talk about is trying to work in public access into this area. And that could be done through, you know, development agreements and other things as things develop. And then the, the airport, it's basically stays as is and remains as is. It's not a lot of room to expand it, but we want to keep it functioning, you know, to its best capacity. And then the civic institutional uses, those can go anywhere that makes, you know, that reasonably makes sense as well as parks and open space. So. So we've got about 10 minutes. Let me quickly, we'll save some time for questions too, so give me a couple of minutes and then we'll do Q and A. So transportation plan, the key things, like I said, the interchange going to Peterson, that this land use plan really banks, really counts on that happening to, to function in a way that makes sense. And then the other thing I would hammer home on the transportation is just creating more roads and connecting roads so that you're not sending all your traffic to the old highway or the Morgan Valley Drive, just creating this, you know, this or just a jam, you know, traffic jam based on these two main roads, getting people off, creating, creating access to the interchanges better and just really thinking through that upfront because once, too many connection, if every, right now, basically, the Cotton Woods has, everything focuses on that highway, the Rollins Ranch does as well, the Highlands does. You know, we, we want to, we have to stop that at some point and create some new roads and, and to which, especially as the town center. It's hard to see here, but as a town center area kind of takes shape, that's the, that's the key area we need to focus on creating a nice, not necessarily grid system, but a connected network of streets so that we can get people off of that road. We have a section on active transportation, you know, we really want to focus on trails and connecting people. That's, that's maybe the number one thing we heard in the survey was we want trails, we want, you know, kind of be able to get out in our community and explore and, and feel safe and connected through, through trails. Parks and open space, so we have a section on this, highlighting kind of key areas that, you know, the key natural areas, places that we would love to preserve, you know, and like I said, this, none of this stuff is required, it's, it's as development occurs. Here's a, here's a place to come back to to see where are the key places we should be thinking about trying to work with landowners, developers to, to preserve in that process. This, this is a section on the toolbox that we need to come put together and think through to preserve open space. That, you know, that's another key thing we heard in the survey. I think we all understand that is how can we preserve an open space? So through things like a land trust and just getting funding, that's, that's, you know, a lot of communities have done similar thing and that's helped be able to purchase land and conservation easements. Perhaps the, the most effective way is just through the zoning and through development agreements and the right, the right planning can preserve the open space you need, allow development where it's appropriate and kind of get the best of both worlds there. So this section really goes into the, the planning aspect and that's another thing I would drive, and design aspect. That's another thing I would drive home is how important this stuff is to creating the place we want. You know, I think when you're talking about things like townhomes, they can easily, if they're done right, they can blend into a community, they can feel, they can feel very just appropriate, like you don't even really think about them. But if they're done poorly, it can really ruin the community, it can, it can really overtake the character. And so there's a lot of information in here trying to help, you know, kind of just give guidance on how to do that and, and set expectations for future development for what it should look like and the quality that we expect. So we, you know, we talked about things like protecting view sheds, how to, this idea of conservation subdivision or cluster development to, to preserve large chunks of functional open spaces, some architectural kind of, this came from the survey as well, what, what residents, the type of architecture that they thought was most interesting for commercial multifamily uses, which essentially is a blend of kind of that modern, kind of mountain western kind of feel, not too modern, not too traditional, just kind of a, a nice mix of, it kind of fits that. I, I actually think the bank that's in the bottom right corner that's currently there, that's a good example of what people are kind of looking for. Some more design stuff. Here's, here's some examples of the types of, of density quote unquote that would be allowed in this plan in, in small areas. So the hope, hopefully what comes from this slide is that we're not talking about apartments, we're not talking about big, you know, massive uses changing the character. A lot of these buildings might be smaller than a, the new homes going up in the Cotton Woods, you know, square footage wise. So I don't, I don't think we're talking about, you know, massive changes in character in that sense. We talk about how to create like the nice neighborhoods, not, we're not the top one with the X through it. That's not what we want. We don't want to cluster and smash a bunch of apartments and townhomes into one area that's just kind of hodgepodge. We want it to feel orderly and, and thought through. Then we have some examples of what to do and what not to do, just to kind of, again, hammer home what we're, what we're thinking and, and understanding that, that it could go, you know, we have to be careful to not let it turn into something like this one with the big X through it. Here's the town center, we talked about the idea of creating a town square and a main street and some of the, the feedback from the resident survey about the town square and what amenities and experience would be preferred there. Some more precedents that we think are good and it could be, and lessons learned from there, as well as a cautionary tale. This is Kimball Junction saying, you know, we want to, you know, it was interesting to read and hear about this, it's just, they thought, they didn't think they really needed a plan for growth in the 90s, they thought it wasn't a big deal and, and they've been trying to correct that ever since as it got run over by development. That's kind of a good example of what we're trying to avoid here. Infrastructure recommendations, so we kind of go through what we need to do here. There's in Mount, Mountain Green, the sewer system's in, in great condition, there's, there's plans to upgrade. All that's in good functioning order. The, the water companies are probably the biggest constraint right now is there's confusion around which, you know, if a builder comes in, how, how do they get water, what's the process, who do they work with? Organizing that is, and kind of formalizing that is, would be a big help for economic development in this area. And then we have some economic development strategies and tactics that we go through and talk about. A lot of this is also kind of some data on, on property taxes, on how to, on what commercial uses could do for property taxes for the county revenues. There's a couple of scenarios based on different builds out, build outs of, of commercial in the area and what that, the amount of money they would generate to, for the county. And then just kind of the next steps, which is a lot of like, you know, getting the zoning in order, figuring out the infrastructure issues and things like that. So. Got three minutes left, before five. Any, any questions and thoughts? And just one, one last thing is, so this, we look through Mountain Green, it's planned, there's another, there's a Peterson plan that's different from this. The land, all the land use stuff is exactly the same, but some of the, some of the recommendations are individualized for Peterson. And so a lot of it will be the same, but there are differences.
Sorry, I got a question for you, Lance. If we have, I know this was a quick half hour.
Yeah.
Could probably spend a couple hours on this, but if we, so I'd like to read through it and get some comments back also. What's, what's that schedule and timeframe look like?
As soon as we can, but, but we're open to whatever needs to be done. So if it's going to take a couple of weeks, then it, I think the timeframes would be in the county's court and we'll, we'll respond as needed. And yeah, I would, yeah, if this was super fast, I would encourage you to, to read through it, give me any comments, you know, whether it's, hey, this fact is wrong, that's, we need to update this just for the plan or, and just general thoughts, oh, this is, you know, we want to revise this or that or to have a discussion about where we need to go from here.
Were you able to correct the points we brought up, Robert and I yet, in that?
No, I haven't done the, the couple of those, but I was going to try to do a round of, so we're not having multiple updates yet.
Okay, that's fine.
This looks really good. There's a lot here, I was kind of scrolling through as you were talking and, yeah, these are big, 115 pages.
Yeah.
So it'll take us a little while to go through it, but.
Exactly.
Lot of good information. Appreciate your time and work on it. Any questions for Lance?
Not right now.
No, but like I said, what I think the, if, if you guys, if you gentlemen want to read through it and give your comments, then I think it then works its way back down into the planning process and.
How are you?
And is a tool utilized and reviewed and evaluated in connection with finalizing the general plan recommendation. I mean, to me, this is a useful area plan for that area that could be incorporated, but there may be comments that we receive in connection with that.
Perfect.
Sounds great. Well, thank you, Lance.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was in a rush, I didn't get a drop box over there. We'll take a small break.
Yeah. Take a real quick break here from our work session and then we'll start our regular meeting. Jeremy, how do we turn this volume up just a little?
I'll give it a try, but if we turn it up too high, then it goes.
Okay. Is that better? Can you hear me any better than you could earlier?
I can.
Maybe? See a few heads nod, okay. All right, welcome to the Morgan County Planning Commission meeting. Today is May 2nd, 2023. We just finished a work session and we will commence our regular meeting. I've asked Commissioner Anderson to offer the invocation and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, as we bow our heads this beautiful afternoon, we give thanks. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet in this setting as a community and discuss the items that residents and us elected officials can discuss back and forth and openly and freely. We're grateful for that ability. We're grateful for those who have sacrificed for our freedoms. Grateful for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for these freedoms that we enjoy daily. We're grateful for the immense amount of moisture that we've received. We ask thee that as this water continues to come down, that we do our best as a community to communicate, to work well with each other, mainly to be safe. I see that as we're out and about with the equipment and sandbags that were cognizant of those around us and that we're safe in the work that we're doing. We are grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful valley. And we say, "He seems in the name of Jesus Christ," amen.
Amen.
Will you stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. All right, we will move to item B, our consent items. We just have the one item, which is approval of the April 18th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any adjustments to the minutes that have not already been provided to Julie?
I wasn't sure on the motion with respect to the fire truck, if that, is it, was it a Pierce? Is that what it was called?
Yes.
So there's just an extra V in there.
Yeah, it's a Pierce. And by the way, we took delivery this week and it's a beautiful truck, it looks great.
Did they let you drive it?
I have not driven it. I, I did tell them I wanted to go for a ride, but I have not for a ride yet.
Not recommended.
Any other items for the minutes? I didn't have any.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve April 18, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest by the commission for any items on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move to our public comment period. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. I will again note, we have three public hearing items, those are the three at the end of our agenda, two rezone requests and one application for modification to the county code. Those items will all take place, I'm sorry, there's actually four. One is a budget adjustment as well. Those will all take place and, and there will be a public hearing opportunity for each of those items later in the meeting. With that, the floor is yours if you'd like to address the commission on any other items.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. Appreciate you guys being here and all that you do. And unfortunately, you may see me again later in one of the public hearings. I have a concern with the general plan and area plans, which you've just discussed, the Mountain Green area plan and the Peterson area plan, as they are being perceived. I recently, in a rezone request, heard staff say he hadn't read the area plan because they weren't part of the general plan. Well, in my opinion, they are. They are in the appendix and the county council at the time put them in the general plan to give them merit in consideration of rezone applications. We felt like they were being disregarded and they're very well put together, very well thought out and big participation by the community. I just feel that if there's been good planning efforts and a considerable amount of time put into a planning document, which has been done with all of the, of the area plans, then they shouldn't be casually dismissed. And I appreciate, I know you guys, many of you have worked on them and have that same feeling, but I just wanted that to be brought out as we're going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Tina.
Hello, my name is Richard Kosky. I'm a resident of Trappers Point neighborhood off of Trappers Loop. And I just have more of a question regarding item number eight, the planning department discussion on CW land, approval of the range preliminary plat. I was traveling and missed the last meeting, but my question is, in this process, my understanding is the developer has to get access off of Trappers Loop through the state. And I'm wondering, what is the timing on that? And does that have to be approved before they do any construction on that property? You know, I, I live and breathe at Trappers Point every day and in the springtime, motorcycle season ramps up. This past Saturday and Sunday was at its peak. I actually made a call to the sheriff's dispatcher. I'm just concerned adding another access on that road, either the speed limit has to be changed or our county has to do a better job enforcing the 90 to 100 mile an hour motorcycles that go on that stretch of road on a regular basis. And I'm not kidding you, working out my yard and it's unbelievable. So will that be addressed in this meeting or is that for future?
So the public comment, we typically don't, don't really interact, we listen.
Okay.
But we do have that item and I, I. But we do have that item and I made a note so we can ask the applicant the status of that at the time. Okay, seeing no additional public comment, we will move into item E, which is our presentations. And we'll start with a presentation from our emergency manager, Mr. Turner, regarding the current status of flooding in the county. And while he's coming up here, I just want to publicly thank Austin and our public works department and our emergency management department. There's been a lot of work done that goes unnoticed, I think, and we appreciate what you do.
So I almost convinced myself that we were going to be okay. We still might, but I don't know. What do you guys want to know about?
What can you tell us about East Canyon? What kind of update do you have with that? Because from everything I heard the past three days, we've been trying. It only allows 300 CFS out of it. So we know much more is coming in and they had to tighten that down a little bit because of the immense amount of water coming in below. Is there any update on that, Austin?
Yeah. East Canyon is gaining three feet a day. So if it continues at this rate, it will spill in 10 to 11 days.
So the reservoir is gaining three?
The reservoir is gaining three feet a day. There's over 800 cubic feet per second going in. It's supposed to max out tonight, but more than that. Jeremy Ranch Road, there was an Uber driver go across Jeremy, attempt to go across Jeremy Ranch Road. They were unsuccessful for the amount of snow that's still on the roadway. We went up and rescued them and are tracked up Can-Am, and there is water running across Jeremy Ranch Road. So we'll have to put Jeremy Ranch Road on the list of county infrastructure that's going to need to be fixed. And there's a significant amount of snow that's still yet to come down through that area. So we're letting out 102 cubic feet per second right now out of East Canyon because of the flows coming out of Hardscrabble. And yeah, we're gaining over three feet a day in East Canyon. So.
So would Hardscrabble be considered mid-elevation snowmelt?
Yes. The mid-elevation snow at Hardscrabble, I just looked at the snow tell site. This year, on an average year, should have one inch of water left in the snowpack. And we're over, we're over 27 inches of water at the mid-level snow that's got to come out.
So if it stays nice and warm for the next seven to 10 days before high-level snow start to come down?
The party's over, yeah, at that point.
But we're going to have rain later this week.
One thing about East, there are hard to gravel. It has risen since I was there this morning, this afternoon, or early this afternoon. It was within six inches of the bottom of the highway. And by the time I came back down, it was higher than that, but it was not coming over yet. So.
Right now, right now, thanks to you guys approving overtime, we have two deputies out. Last night, it was, it took three of us. I went up, it was coming out of Red Rock, and we diverted it so it didn't wash out the State 66 State Road. And we were prepared to close Morgan Valley Drive at Deep Creek. The water was actually starting to come out on the roadway. But at 8 o'clock, for reasons unbeknownst to me, it started to go down. So we've shut. The Army Corps of Engineers is not really happy with Weaver Basin because we've slowed East Canyon down enough that it's, everything we slowed down out of East Canyon is now coming out of Hardscrabble.
Can I add, Austin?
Yeah.
A thousand CFS is currently going out to Willard. And Willard's almost full.
Correct.
And then a thousand will continue to go out the other side of Willard. So they're taking a thousand out there.
Right.
And from what I can see down at the Plain City gauge, which is the last gauge before it goes to Ogden Bay, it's at 4310 CFS and.
Right now, yeah.
Right now. I think there was only one other time in 2017 for a night. It was, it was at that level. And then before then, it would have been clear back in '12 when we had the major flooding happening, that it's been that high. So I guess I want to make sure in the public setting that the residents or whoever's listening might understand we're doing everything possible to hang on.
For as long as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Weaver Basin actually slowed the flows out of all of these reservoirs in an attempt to reduce, because they knew it was coming out of.
Correct.
The drainages below the reservoirs in an attempt to reduce the flooding that's occurring now in Weaver County.
Correct. And last, the last couple of days, we've started to have that mid-level snow, snowmelt. We've started to see flooding in Croydon as well. Croydon was kind of, they were still frozen up there, but now we're starting to see flooding issues in Croydon as well. So right now, the major flooding issues are Croydon, Island Road, portions of Porterville, and the Deep Creek area are the main focuses we have right now. Peterson Creek seems to be holding their own right now as we speak, but Weaver Basin also closed down Echo Reservoir. Echo is pushing about 1,300 cubic feet per second, and they've lowered it down to five and change.
304.
304.
300.
Okay. And so as everybody looks out and sees the river flowing at, how it's been flowing the last few weeks, that does not include the water coming out of the reservoir. The benefit we have with Echo and Rockport reservoirs is they're about 25-ish percent full. The problem with that is there's only 300 cubic feet per second coming out and going into Oakley, into Rockport, where in 2011, I was working up there and it was pushing 3,000 cubic feet per second coming out of the upper Weber. And so that high-level snowmelt hasn't started yet. According to the National Weather Service, that high 9,000-plus feet hasn't even started to ripen or condense down or anything. At the top of Hardscrabble, Lookout Peak, there's still 51 inches of water in, in the snow.
Can we just make a quick mention of maybe the look, again, for the, but locations of sandbags, maybe how many sandbags we have and then what they're used for?
Um, I would, I would, let's, let's start by saying what we want to use them for. Because if, let's start this way. I would like to say we have a lot of amazing volunteers in Morgan County, a lot of really helpful people, and they're willing to come out and help. And they're willing to help their neighbors and help people. The sandbags we have, at this point, we need to start being a lot more judicious in how they are utilized because we don't have enough sandbags to do what needs to be done. There's people asking me to help sandbag fields and outbuildings and things like that. There's, I'm afraid there's not enough sandbags in the state of Utah to do that anymore, to help us. And so I, we need to be more judicious in how we use our sandbags. We need to use them to protect our infrastructure and primary residences. I know a lot of people would like to protect their outbuildings and other things, but we just, we're going to be overwhelmed and we're going to, we're going to have to do everything we can to protect people's homes and our infrastructure. I know in the past, the public works director and myself took some heat because we didn't breach a road. The problem with breaching a road is dealing with utilities. I know I got some pressure to go in and dig out a gravel bar next to a road. What the person that wanted me to do that did not understand was there was a four-inch gas main underneath that gravel bar. And so besides the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers, what it could potentially find us up to $20,000 a day, I didn't want to hit a four-inch gas main from Dominion. And so as you guys are out there, a lot of times, people don't know what they don't know. And if we don't follow their suggestions, there's probably a reason why. And sometimes they don't appreciate those answers, but the number one thing we need to do is protect life safety. And I appreciate when you mentioned in your prayer that we'd be protected with the heavy equipment and all the things we're doing. Because a young lady lost her life down in Weaver County yesterday. Well, we assume she's not been located. And so I know a lot of people get close to the stream banks. Up in, up above East Canyon Reservoir, we tried to armor up a bridge with the big one-ton sandbags, the 2,000-pound sandbags. We went back the next morning and eight of them had been washed down straight. So if you think you can jump in the stream and do okay, if you're stronger than a 2,000-pound sandbag, maybe.
And we aren't there yet.
We've got a long way to go on this.
Probably the next couple of months.
One of the things that you mentioned is being judicial and cautious as to how we use the resources that we have, the sandbags and such that we have. One of the things that I think we need to mention for the public's benefit is that sometimes what may look good for you may have impacts on your neighbors or on other people downstream, and we need to be looking at the whole picture. So please, don't just go doing something without consulting with the county on, on that, whatever that may be. Even if, if, you know, somebody local in the neighborhood says, hey, this is a great idea. We really want you to consult with the county on it before you do it, so that we're sure to not cause a bigger problem downstream. Because no matter where you live in the county, somebody lives downstream. So we need to be really careful about that.
And I, and I, I, there's a stream inside Morgan County where one landowner on one side went in and pulled out all the brush and willows and armored up their bank with a bunch of dirt. And the neighbor called the county and asked John and myself to come up and pull all the stuff off of his side of the bank. Today, as I was standing there with him, and he realized that by tearing out all of the, the willows and shrubs and brush, that bank is now the one washing away. The one where we said, no, let's leave your bank alone. He's getting the more pressure, but his bank is standing because of the willows and everything that's, that's holding his bank together. And so I got off the phone before I came here to a guy that wanted to pull out an old bridge abutment out of East Canyon Creek. And he asked me when the best time to do that was. And I told him last year. The next best time to do that's probably going to be in October or November. Talking to a lifelong farmer of the county, he says you never put a pipe in a ditch when it's raging, because it'll wash the pipe out. And so I just asked the public to be patient. Right now is not the time to go in and do anything drastic in the stream beds. But we'll do our best. We'll work our hardest to make sure that we'll protect what we can.
Thank you, Austin. Is there anything else that you need from us at the current time?
One thing I'm going to request.
Just call me anytime.
Yeah. Call Austin. But the other thing is, is if there, besides just calling Austin, you can go onto the website. And we've set up the website so that way you can go in and report these incidents that are happening. But remember, we are trying to protect homes first. Outbuildings may not ever get protected. And the other thing is, is if you do go out and do some volunteer work, make sure you go to the website afterwards and record it. And if your neighbor doesn't do it, and you don't, I mean, because you can see it. And if you, if, I mean, everybody that's reported it, if that by chance is not, you know, like the other night, Sunday night, we were out there protecting that place Austin was talking about, that he took out all the brush, which was a mistake. And I've told him again today because he's going to wash out now. I'm afraid he will wash out no matter what happens, especially if it gets up three more feet. But if people can go and just report all of the time that you're spending on it, we need that. As a county, we need that. Right, Mike?
And, and I had the football team, they all, I, well, most of them reported, I hope. But ultimately, with the volunteers, I appreciate everything they're doing. And I like, I like their excitement, but ultimately, when FEMA comes to town, they're not going to be asking for volunteers. It's going to be between myself and you guys. That's who FEMA is going to want to talk to. And so the more people work with us, then there's accountability. When FEMA comes to town and starts asking questions, if we haven't.
Agreed. So for the public, again, if you want to report flooding of any kind or report volunteer hours or that you've spent filling sandbags or any other work to prevent flooding, please go to the Morgan County website. There's a link from our homepage. You can also go to the emergency services page, and there's a link there. And please report it there. Austin cannot take all the phone calls that, that come in. And so that's why we set up the website is to try to, to divert some stuff through there. But you can go and add pictures. You can tell us what's going on. We do have a emergency dispatch set up just for this event out of our fire station. So if, if a phone call comes in or a notification through the website, they're relaying that information to Austin and, and our public works department. Our fire chief and sheriff as well are all involved in that. So the information is being dispersed correctly. Please help us by, by helping provide information to us.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm always saying one more thing. I, in a meeting I had the other day, they just said to make sure and tell you that we are more prepared now than we were in 1983 and '84. And they wanted to commend us, or commend you, you, basically, on what has occurred. And this was from a former commissioner at that time. So that was a compliment to you guys. So I appreciate it.
I hope it's enough.
Yeah. But at least we're more prepared now than we were then.
Anything else for Austin? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to.
Go get some rest.
He needs them.
If you see Austin around, he likes the, is it, it's not the Rockstars. Yeah, it's the Rockstars. The rejuvenation ones. All right. We're going to have just a very quick update from Mr. Gibson. He represents the group that we've hired to help lobby the state legislature for the Mountain Green Interchange. Many of you are probably interested in this project. It's a project that's big for the county. We feel like it's, it's very important to the county. And so we've committed some resources to, to push our legislature to get that through and make it happen. So Carrie?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. And if you wouldn't mind a quick, uh, personal privilege, I, I just have to, I'm having a moment back there. About, uh, January of 2011, I was sworn in as the county commissioner in Weaver County, and had no idea what was going to hit me in about March. And so, I'm living this with you over again, um, having been in the seat that you're in and felt that weight of responsibility. I have to admit, uh, Austin had me there for a minute with his emotion and his dedication. Mr. Turner, I should call him officially. And all I can say is that, uh, I, I want to reiterate what Commissioner Fackrell said, that, that I think after 2011, uh, there was an awful lot of effort that was put into making things better. And, and one of the things that we committed, um, I had the opportunity to work closely with Commissioner Anderson during that time, and we committed that we were going to not forget as soon as the water went away. And we didn't, and it turned into about a 10-year project, but, um, the fact that we're taking 4,300 at Plain City right now with, uh, not too terrible of consequences is an absolute miracle and testament to some of the work that was done. And that helps things all the way up the stream. And, uh, anyway, I, I just, I just want you to know that I have stayed close in the water world with my, um, relationships with the Department of Natural Resources and Agriculture, and I have never seen a better and more coordinated effort as we're seeing this year. So with all of the things that are happening, and all the things that are, that feel painful, Mother Nature at the end of the day is going to do what she will. But we are in a better spot, we're in a much better spot. And what is encouraging to me is to see the full academic and, uh, data, the, the full data running through the minds of all these responsible parties, to watch them collaborate. But I think most of our, most of all is to watch their hearts and, and see that they're doing the very best they can. So I, I just encourage on the public record to have patience with these individuals, as they work hard through these challenges, because they are going to be real. I have a, a building underwater in my backyard right now. I've got huge, uh, carp, uh, flopping around, uh, in what should be a field full of onions. And yet, by the same token, um, my house is, uh, is safe.
Hey, you know, I have this play at Candy Crush.
And I have no idea how to play Candy Crush. Anyway, uh, I want to tell you thank you, all of you, for the work that you're doing. I watched this, I, I watched Commissioner Anderson when we were basing the other day. I can feel the weight on his, I can see the weight on his shoulders, and I can see the weight on Austin's shoulders and all of you. Anyway, just thank you for all the work you do. Okay, I'm going to try to be in a better mood now, because we do have some good things to talk about, and I apologize, it's been a few weeks since the legislature ended, but there was a lot going on after the legislature as well, and that's one of the reasons why I chose to, to wait a few weeks to, to give this report. But we also have a lot continuing to happen. I think it's fair to say that, um, that Morgan County has been, um, heard again on the Hill. It's been fun to watch that whole discussion take place. I think that it, it's not all us. I mean, we're grateful for the role that we play, and I'm proud of that. But I have seen a dramatic increase, um, by the entire commission as well, in the participation levels that you have put forth to participating in the legislative process and in the, the UAC, uh, organization. It's been, it's been fun to watch, because I think, again, the more engagement that takes place, the more understanding happens, um, and, and people start to hear us the most. I, I can tell you legislators, um, know us, they know what our requests are, what our desires are, and they are starting to see and recognize your faces as commissioners, right? And that's a good thing, because, um, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, for lack of a better term. If you can do it respectfully, the key is to be in their ear respectfully whenever we possibly can. And you, and you have set up a system in which we've been able to do that. So thank you for that. As you know, uh, last year in the legislative session, we were able to, uh, secure $5 million for, uh, planning work on the, on the interchange. And that was really the key to the process, the way that it's, the way that it's moving right now. We had to get that process started. At the time, there was absolutely nothing on a list, um, on Wasatch Front Regional Council or anything like that, um, to get us in the queue for this funding. That, getting that process started was huge, and the discussion has continued throughout the year. This year, they took a little bit of a different tact, as I reported towards the end of the session last time I was here. They did not do a, a specific list where they called out specific projects again. And so, that, that was, that's a good thing in ways strategically. It's also a little more difficult because, uh, but, but it's good because of the timing, the fact that we were, that we were already in the queue with the first funding source. What that means is now UDOT has the ability to program money directly, uh, without necessarily having legislative language. We had a very, very good year legislatively. I mean, a very, very good year, uh, even though there's nothing specifically called out for this project. The reality is, the project is moving forward, legislators know that it's moving forward, UDOT knows that it's moving forward, and, um, there will be more updates to come. That, that project is, is well on its way. One of the good things about that, um, obviously, we know that there's some connection to, um, possible Olympics. Um, you know, they want to, they want to have some infrastructure in place, that's part of it. Those talks are still in, ongoing, but it's likely that we're going to see Olympic Games here again, um, either in 2030 or 2034. So, um, as far as the interchange is concerned, um, I'm 100% confident of our progress there and, and look forward to continuing that process. I will, I did just want to touch base, though, on, uh, transportation funding as a whole. Most of you have probably received, um, some updates as far as, uh, some legislation that was passed and the funding mechanisms, uh, in the way that that happened. We are super excited about that. I, I, as I was listening to Austin talk about, uh, roads that were washed out and, and work that's going to have to be done, my, that was when the happy part of me kicked in and thought, well, good, they're going to have a little bit more money to do some of that. And that's the reality here. Rural Utah has been, you know, I'm, I'm a redneck, so I can say this, but rural Utah has been neglected from a transportation standpoint for a long time, and Morgan is, is no different. My belief is that, I, I've been around the transportation discussion and debate at the legislature now for 20 years. I have, every single time we have tried something like this, we have been shot down by urban counties and urban cities who didn't want to share, uh, funding sources with urban, rural counties, because they just don't get out enough to know that they need it, right? They, once in a while, on vacation or whatever, enough to make it difficult, but they don't, they don't understand how it affects them. We, we approached early on, our team approached early on before the session, Senator Owens, to sponsor a transportation, uh, infrastructure bill. And, and I will admit, uh, as I sat with Lincoln Schertz and Casey Hill and tried to strategize how we wanted to move that forward, I shook my head and said, they're never going to go for this. And when I say they, I meant Wasatch Front counties, Wasatch Front cities, um, were never going to go for this. Well, um, we put together a good plan, uh, Senator Owens jumped on it and sponsored it, and guess what? They went for it. And for those commissioners who are up there helping others to understand that, I think you'll find that some of your greatest support was some of those commissioners just on the other side of the hill, that didn't get a dime of it, because we specifically carved it out as, as a rural transportation infrastructure fund that was, uh, specifically for third through sixth class counties. And, um, it turned, it turned out beautifully. I mean, it was brutal until we got leadership onboard to run with it, and then all of a sudden, it, it went, it went really well. So, um, what you're going to see is a, a direct appropriation on July 1st of $40 million into that fund from the state, uh, and then ongoing money as well as 50% of your, uh, an increase to the Class B and C Road Fund allocation. So it's going to be, uh, it's, it's not only a one-time infusion, but it's an ongoing infusion that's going to continue on in perpetuity, uh, based upon, uh, those Class B and C Road Fund.
Kerry, can I, can I step in real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
And this is directly pointed towards Brett back there, and I'm expecting a little bit of a smile, that he's going to be get, that direct appropriation for Morgan County is a one-time in July, and it'll equal the amount, approximately the amount of money you get for your full year for B and C funds. So be ready. And I know we've got a lot of roads out there that, that could use the help.
Yeah. And the reality is, um, it, it's unfortunate that we're at the place we're at, that we need it that badly. I mean, this is not, this seems like a lot of money, but in today's world, it's, it's not. You'll still need to be wise with, with the way that that happens. But for the first time, and it, it's going to be, it'll be there, it's allocated, it's at your discretion. So you have the opportunity to program that money. There's no, uh, you know, there's no limitations as to how you program that money. You're, you'll be able to do that. It's not federal money, it was all state appropriated funding. And so, it's, it's going to be a good situation, uh, from a transportation perspective, one that, that we haven't seen in a long, long time. And, uh, it, it was, I, I just want to thank you all for your willingness and your ability to help us with that process, because that, that, that was a very good year. Whenever we, as a team, I know Jared mentioned, or Commissioner Anderson, uh, no, it was Commissioner Newton that mentioned when he introduced me, specifically, um, you know, that we were brought on to, to help with the interchange. But the reality is, we are always keeping Morgan County in the discussion, no matter what the project is. Um, I've, I'm working on several product, projects right now that I won't go into, um, but, uh, can talk to you in person with, with individual commissioners. Um, there, there's a lot going on in Morgan County right now, and a lot of, a lot of positive things happening. I, I will say that, um, you know, sometimes we get direction, and sometimes we don't have time to get direction. So, um, one example is, just the other day, we have a, a committee, or a part of our team that's on the Outdoor Rec Committee, and, um, the minute we saw some Morgan County applications, um, we, we lobbied that heavily and got some funding for Morgan County for some of those projects. So those are the kind of things that we do sometimes without even knowing, without even being able to communicate with you, I hope, um, you know, but, but then hopefully, um, it, it makes sense, and they all, they, they generally do. So I do appreciate the updated, or the, uh, more common communication. I hear from, um, members of your commission all the time, and I think, I think we've got a good thing going. So it's just been a great, it's been a really, really good year, one that I'm proud to stand, stand and say, uh, we're being successful. I think you're getting your money's worth and then some. Uh, that's my opinion, but you can tell me, right? But I, I will say, I just want to say thank you. You're doing great work. It's, it's fun to see the passion and the work that you're putting into this, and I'm just grateful to be a part of the team.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Questions? Okay. It's a long meeting, I'll let you get going.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. One more item that I failed to mention when we were talking with our emergency manager. There is a Morgan County Emergency Management Facebook page. If you're not following it, I would strongly suggest that you do follow it. We're going to keep updates posted there and information, so if you would like updated information, go follow that page. We will move to, um, our action items under Section F, and we'll start with Jason Morgan. Jason, you want to come up?
Actually, it should be under the Morgan Conservation District, but I was wanting to fill out the...
We do have Morgan Conservation District, so you're good.
So there's a couple others, Todd and Kevin here, too. Time for our bag of woad. Uh, we're a little late getting started with all the snow. We're, we are actually going to delay the time of starting and go further into June than we've done in the past. Once it does start growing, it's really going to grow with all the moisture that we've got. So, uh, we do have a, a grant we also got to put towards this, uh, so we've got a little extra money. And, um, the last few years, it's kind of been, last year especially, it was so hard to pull because it was so dry, and, uh, we had little participation. I mean, but, um, we've got the FFA going into the middle schools, um, kind of explaining what Dyer's Woad is and talking about the program. We did that a few years ago, and that really boosted it. And I don't know, I think the kids that have been doing it are graduated, and we need some new blood in there to get it. And as with everything else that's inflated, we got to pay them more for the bags of Dyer's Woad than we have been. So we've upped that to, from $10 to $15. So, um, in the past, um, you guys have donated, uh, $1,500 towards it. That's what we're asking. Um, it, we used to, the county used to pay for the dump, the tipping fees, but the last few years, um, we've had that donated. And Cindy is working on that, she's pretty sure she can get Robinsons to donate their dumpsters. We are, this year, we are going to do something a little bit different. We're going to do a, like a Saturday and try to, like, maybe set up down in Petersons, we haven't decided, we kind of need to wait to see where, or Mountain Green or something, and do a Saturday. They hand out bags in the morning, maybe feed them a hamburger when they bring some bags back in the afternoon. Just try to get some more people involved, so, anyway. That's what we're asking for, is the $1,500 that we've been doing.
Okay, any questions? Questions?
I think this is a great program and worthwhile. Anything we can do to control invasive species is, is helpful.
We get kids that go clear on the mountain where it's growing, that's the problem, is it's getting up there where it's hard to get.
Yeah, it's getting harder and harder to get that. And the big thing is, is I hope that the public realizes these kids, um, are going out and trying to do this, and it's creeping in from both, well, both sides of Weaver County. It's coming in, and, uh, I think we need to, as a public, maybe have the kids stop at your house, or your big field, or whatever, and say, can I go in there to get this and, and make it to work? Sure, go ahead, as long as you don't destroy the fences or something like that. But just allow them to do it, because it's getting worse and worse. And it's not just along the highways, it's in people's pastures, in their yards, everything.
Yep.
So...
Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion on item number one.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we, uh, fund or provide to Morgan Conservation District for the Dyer's Woad donation dumpster program, $1,500 from the fund balance.
A second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you, Todd and Kevin, for coming to represent us well. We appreciate it. Okay, Brett Heiner. County road projects for this year. We should probably preference this with the fact that this list is a little shorter than normal.
It is, isn't it? It is. And just to go on what, uh, Mr. Gibson said, um, the exchange is, is exciting for Public Works, because, uh, a bigger gas station down there would allow us to get more B and C funds if, and maybe you can help out there, Chairman, to say how, how we get B and C funds. A lot of the public doesn't realize how we really get the funds to fix these roads. It doesn't really necessarily come from their taxes, it comes from gas tax. And so, if you buy gas in Morgan County, it comes back to Morgan County in, in B and C funds. So to have more of an infrastructure down there to, where people buy more gas in the county, that would help us out a bunch.
Yeah, so we, we get a portion of the gas tax from the statewide sale of gas, but we actually get a little bit more from what's actually sold within the county. So I realize you'll probably pay a little more per gallon to buy it in the county, but you'll also help.
If you buy it from Davis County, then you're going to help them out, their, their own a little more. And I know it's, so it'd be great to have that competitive price up here someday.
And we do, we get calls and, and concerns from residents on a regular basis about the, the condition of roads and, and public facilities. And one comment I just want to make is that Morgan County receives about $600,000 a year in road funding through the gas tax. That has to cover every road in the county, and, and $600,000 does not go very far. In fact, that, what will that pave, Brett? About two and a half miles of road if we were doing a full pave?
That'd be a good guess, and that, and you know, our salt budget, uh, part of our fuel budget, uh, that kind of stuff comes out of that same fund, so.
And this year, salt and fuel have been very expensive. As you, those of you who shoveled your driveways know, it, we had to plow snow a lot this year, and we spend a lot on, on salt as well, so.
To give you an idea, um, our budget allows for about 1,800 ton we purchased, and this is from, you know, around Thanksgiving, December, so, and, and we run on calendar year, so the budgets are two different budgets, but... we run on calendar year, so the budgets are two different budgets, but we bought 3,200 ton of salt. And normally, if we had a normal 100% here, we would, we would buy 1,800 ton. So that'll tell you how big a winter we have right there. And that comes out of that fund you write. So usually I bring you a list, a short list and a long list, but I think we got too big a gap to really worry about the long list tonight. Um, I brought you what we can afford today. I know we've got good news coming, Commissioner Anderson, about more money. And that's the way we bid the job. We bid with, uh, we had, we had five different contractors that, that, uh, that brought us bids and that's the way we bid it was we can add to this contract, Commissioner, real easy. Uh, it's just a, it all comes down to quantity. It's the same price, bigger quantity, really the better deal we get. And so if we do end up with more funds, then we can add more roads to this project, so. And that's, it spells that out in the contract. Um, and let's talk about, let's do talk about our wish list a little bit and that's kind of our long list. Um, I give you the prices of, say, rea doing Deep Creek and the cut off, or the, uh, the back road in Croydon, just to tell you, that's the biggest needs that I can see besides the small roads that we do have on our list, the roads that we can't afford this year. And we can also talk about why we can't afford to do $600,000 for the paving, Commissioner Newton. Um, and that's because of our bridge, our bridge projects. And, uh, whether we're having a little trouble getting a bridge done or not, it's still, we still planned on spending a lot of our money on paying for the match on that bridge, the Croydon Bridge. We, we paved the Peterson Bridge last year and this year we have the Croydon Bridge. So that's the big reason that our list is shorter this year. We're doing what we can afford to pave because of the bridge. So.
Just for the public's information, Brett's been able to secure some federal funding for several of our projects. You may remember Morgan Valley Drive was repaved a couple of years ago. That was done with federal funding. Um, the Peterson Bridge Project, the Stoddard Bridge Project, those were both done with federal funding. Croydon Bridge Project, even with the federal funding, we still have to come in with a match. Our match is a little over 6%.
Yeah, 6.7%.
Which is, thank goodness, because these projects are multimillion dollar projects and where we only receive $600,000 a year in funding, there's no way we could do it without the federal funding. So we appreciate that federal funding, but it, it does, we still have to have match money. The Croydon Bridge Project is going to be close to $9 million by the time we're done with it. Um, you can figure out what 6% of that is, but it's a, it's a fairly substantial amount of money. So that's most of a year's worth of BNC funds.
So that's about 400,000, but the good part is, is this bridge has been going on for three years. I mean, design took this long and we have paid, uh, quite a bit on it. You know, we pay as the bills are coming in, so it's ongoing. We'll be paying on this bridge into next year now, so, um, that will help split it up a little bit, but that is taking a lot of our road money paving this year, but we're going to have to do what we can do until we maybe do get some extra funding.
Brett, can you just mention quickly, I know I can take time to mention, but, um, I think as far as most residents are concerned, the road I live on is the most important, right? And has the most issues. But how would you go through the, how do you typically go through the process of saying, okay, here, here's why we're doing this road, here's why we're doing this road and have an order in that? What, if you can do that quickly?
So we have a one to four rating, so number one is priority roads and that's a road that needs to be paved. It's not a road that we got to chip. It's a paving road that's coming apart and, and if you look at the map or if you drove the road, you would see what I'm talking about in Mountain Green. Deep Creek would be a number one road if you want an example. The back road, of course, uh, going into Croydon would be a number one road. A number two road would be something that I could chip and save without paving it. And, um, you know, we might do that or we might have to paint part of it or chip part of it or who knows. We might crack seal it, we might crack seal it and chip it. That'll be more like your number two road. So if you live on them roads and you don't have great big potholes and it's falling apart, it's probably a number two road. If it, if it has those big potholes and it's really in tough shape, it's probably a number one road. A number three road is, it could really use a chip, but it's on that borderline where, uh, I mean, it'd be great to chip a number three road and that would make them last even longer, but we're not to that point yet. We're a little bit behind. A number four road is a road that's in great shape, so. How to give you the rating system. Is that what you want?
Thank you, yeah.
So you want to go to the wish list or you want to just do the contract first? I love wish list.
Commissioners, any preference?
So what are, are we just looking to approve the, the Staker Parsons contract tonight?
Yeah, and if you look, we've got a map of where we're going to do a little bit of paving that we are. And a little note there, we're not going to do, we're, we're not doing any, um, chipping this year, which, which I'd really like to do, but again, it's the money, it's the money that's, that's holding us back. But hopefully, if we get the extra funds, we can catch up. And you know, the bad thing that happens on a winter like this is it's even harder on the roads. So we got a kind of a double edged sword here this year because you can see what a lot of water does, a lot of freezing temperatures does to the roads, makes them fall apart even quicker. If you go to other counties, you'll see the same thing. Go down to Weaver County on some of the railroad, you'll see that they've got more potholes than they've, than they had last year. So this is really small, but it's down in Mountain Green. We've got, uh, three roads that we really need to pave bad. These roads are in really tough shape. If we don't do something, we're going to end up in a rebuild situation, so. So I think these are really needed. That's why I'm, I've got these on the top of my number one list. I've got more number one roads than this, but the money's not there yet, but. And the way I did the, the, the bid again is, um, I can add to this real easy. Believe me, the contractor would love to have more work and it, it actually works out for a better price, the more tonnage that we, that we put out, so. That's how it, that's how we bid it. And that's how we're, and that's how we have in the past. And, um, we've got it on a three-year contract. We always get better prices that way. I can hold them to this price because we know what happens, right? Every year, everything goes up. So I like to put it on a three-year contract and that way at least we know we've got this year's price for two more years, so. And we do have the option to extend it if the prices, you know, if they could really hold their price down, we do have an option to extend it, so. I don't know if Garrett has any questions on that?
No, I just had an update on page two of the contract, the unit price work. The quantity is 300, but on the, on the Wasatch Civil Sheet, it's 310. And so I think we would just update that.
Yeah, so the Wasatch Civil is an estimate before I put it out to bid and I have to have that so I can know what I'm kind of going for.
So it's not a change in the, in the price that they're estimating, it's a change in the quantity. And so the quantity's 300 at 90, but the amount is 27,900, so it's just missing 10 from the quantity.
Oh, okay.
So I think we could just update that.
Yeah, we have to, okay.
And it'll be accurate.
Yeah, no problem. We can do that. And before we, before you vote on this, um, the reason I give you these two other roads is just to give you an idea, uh, what, what I would do this year if I did have the funding, if that makes sense. Um, we don't yet. I mean, it sounds like we've got some money coming, but we want to make sure that gets here, I think.
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail type of thing, yeah.
So that being the, this Deep Creek Road overlay, is that what you're talking about, the two additional roads?
Yeah. And both of these roads have a couple of hitch, you know, they have a couple of hitches in it too. That's relying on me fixing the water problems and cut ditching and getting the roads ready for this. So I do have a little bit of work ahead of us too for that. And what I'll probably do, if we do get extra funding, is I'll just come back to you again. So that's why we're just, I'm just kind of giving you a heads up what we would like to do, but we don't have quite the money yet, so. Hopefully in July, we can come back and do a little more.
Brett, why is it only a two inch thick overlay?
That's a normal overlay, two inches.
Okay.
That's a normal, normal overlay is two inches. And actually, uh, the way I've done it, if you notice the roads that I've done, a lot of the roads don't have much of a crown. I always put a crown in the road, so they might go just a hair thicker in the center and then down just a little bit on the edge, but they're always a two inch overlay.
And so the Croydon Road that we're going to have to repair, is that coming to us at a later time or are we working on something different?
Yeah, and I, and I do have some good news on that, too.
We're not going to replace it this year, um, because we're going to have to detour on it again, so we don't want to tear it up and again this summer after replacing it, so it'll be a next year project.
Okay.
But Brett, do you want to give the update on that project?
Yeah, um, I was, I was in a meeting today. Uh, UDOT is going to help us fix the bad spots up there, Summit County and Morgan County side. They're going to start probably Saturday. So, and I've already done some, but they're, they're going to bring in their lay down machine and they're going to do that.
Hold on, Brett, did you just say UDOT's going to do work on county roads?
Yeah.
That's a miracle there, just letting everybody know. That's amazing.
Well, that's great news for my budget and, and us if they can help us out with that, you know.
We, we've pushed that very, very hard. That was the one thing we visited with the governor about, we visited with all of our legislators. We've gone to anybody, then everybody will listen on that project.
And that's, that doesn't, that doesn't happen, so. That's, that's great news.
It must have worked. It must have worked. But that's the word I got today. I haven't seen anything final. I mean, I hope it just happens, but I think so.
The other, the other update is the abutment that was completed on the one end.
It was completed over the weekend on the bridge. That allows us to put in a temporary bridge better, easier and makes more sense. Probably a hair cheaper.
More or less, less expensive because it's not as, won't be as long, correct?
Yeah, and then we don't have to put in a temporary abutment, that kind of stuff. And then if that works, then we'll sometime late fall, early winter, we'll take it back out and finish the bridge. It should take about six weeks to finish it. So that'll put us six weeks back on the back road again. But we need to get past that heavy truck traffic, so we need to go late as we can. Of course, water levels have to be down to 50 CFs if it can be, so.
Keep the good news coming on this project.
When does the temporary bridge arrive?
We couldn't have picked a worst year in 40 years to build a bridge.
In the next month.
That's the only mistake we did was picked the worst year in 40 years to build a bridge. I don't know how you know in November how the winter's going to be.
You don't.
You don't, do you?
Even your worm was later than that. The worm was.
That's, that's a complicated project as well, that.
It's a very complicated bridge. People don't realize how complicated that bridge is. It's probably the toughest bridge to build in the state. Water levels and railroad and the level it has to be to get under those tracks and there's a lot of challenges in that bridge. To give you an idea, there's almost a million dollars in design in that bridge, so.
And so we're getting a temporary with bridge then right away?
So we'll put a temporary bridge in. The, the challenge right now is the cement plant is now ramped up now that they're opening batch plants and, and production's really ramping up. So there's about 100 semi trucks a day carrying product out of the cement plant. That doesn't count the trucks that are coming in, bringing materials in that they use to make the cement. Those 100 trucks a day are doing a detour that's, it's about 12 miles, I think, total, maybe not quite. Um, so that detour road is, is, it's in pretty bad shape. If, if you want a, an interesting drive, drive your pickup truck to Croydon, don't take your car.
Take a Dodge pickup.
All right. Any other questions for Brett?
So basically, we're voting on just the one bid, correct?
So we have, we have three bids there.
Yeah, which one are we voting on?
One agreement. The award.
The, the award, the one with just a little bid, the Staker Parsons.
The Staker Parsons is the winning bid.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's the one we're doing and not the others.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the notice of award and contract agreement with Staker and Parson Companies for the 2023 straight, street maintenance projects Funding to come from the Class BNC road funds.
I'll second it.
So a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate your work and, and we appreciate the work of your, your team as well.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Fackrell.
Yes, where Jeremy, not this Jeremy, the other one. Let me just kind of tell you what's going on. We have the internet, uh, that we're trying to figure out for the whole county. And this is a plea, not just to the commission, but because they know what's going on, but this is a plea for the public to go to the website, the Morgan County website, and it will, Jeremy, are you bringing that up for me? Or is there another?
This is for the.
What's that?
This room.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, it's on the, it's not in this room, it's on the, the stream, the live stream.
Okay, all right. So it's on the live stream. So when you go back home, you can look at this, right?
The QR codes up on the screen.
QR codes on the screen?
Stream.
Oh, the stream.
YouTube.
Okay. So basically what this is, is I need everybody's help in the county. If you have good internet, great, but I still need you to do the survey. I need you to go in and I need you to click on the survey, do a survey, and I need it to be within a week and a half, by about the eighth, ninth, tenth of, uh, May. Because I am trying to, I am, we are trying to prove to the state of Utah and the federal government that we are, we are not adequate, we are underserved as far as the internet goes. And according to the federal guidelines, we are supposed to be having 100 megabytes download. Now tell me, how many people besides a few of us that have that? We are underserved in this county. I need you to go to that website, do the survey and then test your computer, but do not do it with a cell phone. And if you have satellite, you can go ahead and put that in and do it with that, but we need you to do this. It's a very, very important survey because we can't prove that we're underserved if you don't do that, no matter who you have. Okay? So I appreciate it if you do that and that was all I had.
I did the survey last week. It took me about five minutes.
Yeah.
It's very painless, so.
And then you've got to do a speed test on the, on your, uh, computer too. And we prefer if you do a speed test about three times during the day. So if you do it in the morning when you get up, midday, if somebody's around the house and then especially in the evening, because that's when everybody gets on the internet and we want to prove that we're not getting 100 megabytes per second. And so we need to have that. If you're within the city, you're already covered, it doesn't matter, but anywhere outside of the county, I mean, outside of the city is when we need to have it. And we need to have it as quick as you can do it. So that's the plea. Oh, is it? Quick?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Um, I'm just trying to get clarification. I was under the impression that we allocated and appropriated funds for the ClearGov, um, software and then I never saw anything transpire on it. I think Blaine had originally brought it up, but, um, so I'm just trying to figure out where we're at on it, what we're doing on it, so we know whether we're moving forward. I just have to respond back to them one way or the other, so. That was coming from ARPAFunds, right?
That's what I, I thought it was.
Yes, it's coming from ARPAFunds. And, uh, basically that's a, I mean, we moved it up a month. I have talked to both Leslie and, uh, Julie and Treger Kimberley and, uh, they all are And they all are in agreement. Well, I don't know. Leslie might have some questions for us. So we need to do that. We have not approved it yet.
Okay. So should we have Leslie speak with them then?
No, we need to have Leslie speak with us.
Okay.
Because I don't know, she's talked to the rest of you. She talked to me. Because I wanted to know whether or not it was a good thing for her to help us out in the budgeting process this year.
Okay.
Okay?
So I can't remember the discussion we had on this as far as procurement was concerned.
It was a state single source. I am, I think. I'm not sure.
Okay.
It would be good to verify if it's under state procurement or a single source.
Right.
I know they gave a great presentation and they do a great job, but I don't think they're the only group out there, so.
And I can agree. Maybe it isn't, maybe it isn't the right one for us.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on that.
But I know Leslie has some questions for us, right?
Sure, if you have something you want to...
I was able to do a Zoom meeting with Julie and Kimberley and I. I think it's pretty. I think it's going to do some great things. I think some of it is Casell already does. But I see pros and cons. I'm just curious who's going to maintain it, who's going to maintain the program. It's going to cause more work because we're going to be uploading Casell documents to ClerGov and back and forth. And are you going to have your department heads using this to track their projects? Because if they're not going to, I don't really think it's going to be worth it. The pros, I think, will be very helpful when we do our budget for wage calculations and COLA increases. Budget monitoring looks really awesome, but Casell does that for us. And I was happy to see that they are partners with Casell. So it does, they do talk back and forth, the programming, so that's a good thing. So I, it's up to you. That's just my thoughts.
Sounds like we've got a couple of questions we can get answered.
We do not, according to the one that Matt sent us, we do not have to have it done by the 5th of May to keep that price because I have an earlier one that keeps it until July 1st.
Okay. And that was, was that with Sarah that you had that Zoom meeting with? Okay.
She was awesome. Yeah, she was very helpful. We also did, sorry, we also did talk about, you know, with our budget. We talked to her about implementation in May. She would train employees June and July, and then we would be up and running by August 1st so that we can put requests out to department heads for budgets to start coming in, so I can put a budget together for you, so.
Sounds like if we're going to go this direction, we ought to get it approved by our next meeting to be on that schedule.
Time is definitely of the essence, essence at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilson?
So we need to add a postponement.
What's that?
Because it says here approval, do we need to postpone?
Yeah, we could probably do that, a motion to postpone until our next meeting. You're going to make that motion.
Sure. I move that we postpone the contract with ClerGov service until we, until we found out the other items that we need to, such as if it's a single source or not, and...
What's that date?
16th.
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 Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone till May 16th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, Commissioner Fackrell. Approval of the 2023 small business grants offered through the Rural Economic Opportunity Grant.
Okay, every year, the, our Advisory Board for Economic Development has, they put into the budget, and the budget is a budget from our rural grant Part A only. It's not from any of our county funds. It's directly from that economic grant, and they go through a process to, I mean, they basically put aside $50,000 this year. They put aside $30,000 last year. But this year it was a $50,000 out of that Economic Opportunity Grant from the state. And so this year they have gone through their, their good stuff. And I'm going to let them tell you what it is and who are the recipients, and then we just have to approve it.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting me be here. This Morgan County Grant Program for Small Businesses originated because prior to the state giving the counties the Economic Opportunity Grant, Part A, the state had a Fast Track Grant Program. And around the state, what I've heard from the state is that Morgan County businesses participated in that Fast Track Grant offered by the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, more than any other county. And they were shocked to see what the, what the business climate was like in Morgan County. So the Morgan County businesses, myself with the Business Resource Center and the Morgan County Grant Committee want to thank the commission for making those funds available. And I will show you how we're planning, how we'd recommend using those funds this round. We also appreciate John Barber, who's the Economic Opportunity Board Chair, and also Commissioner Fackrell for overseeing this process. So he's been instrumental in making sure that the deliberations were fair and equitable, and we look forward to getting your feedback. So the members of the committee were John Barber, James Ebert, the County Economic Development Director, Mayor Steve Gale, Trace Wardell, Greg Vedrine, who was with the First Community Bank until he retired. We still wanted his financial expertise, and myself. And so what we'd recommend for the businesses this time, this round, would be, we can go to the next slide. Pigby Honey, Mike has been growing his business quite substantially, but is, has been in the need of growing his hives, which would, if he, growing his hives by another 64 hives, he would split them as soon as they come out of the orchards in California, which would give him double. So 100, would that be 128 or something like that? By the end of the year, he could split those hives enough times to where he'd end up with, he's got, I think, 70 hives now. He'd end up with 300 hives at the end of the year. So what he wants to do is increase the amount of honey that he can produce, plus get additional revenue from the pollination of orchards around the country with his, with his hives. So the request he gave us was for 12,800. We recommended 11,550. You can see the others that totaled the 50,000.
Before you go on, let me kind of explain just a little bit more about this. This is not just to line their pockets, the businesses. Because a business that survives in Morgan County and flourishes in Morgan County, we have a tax base for it. And that tax base comes back in sales tax. And by doing that, we have, and plus it might give more opportunity for more employees also. And so that is the main reason for this, is, is to help us bring in more money into our county.
That's a great point. With currently, when he, when he harvests the honey from his existing hives, he sells out in five months, and that's just with some locations here in Morgan County. What he'd like to do is sell more nationally is make Morgan Valley honey available all over the country with the additional production. So the sales taxes that he makes, that he, from those sales locally, will be substantially increased. Plus, he's planning on hiring. These additional hives will require additional employees. And that will, that will continue to grow. He's looking forward to hiring more youth, as well as adults, to help grow the business. Okay, next one. Is Brighton Blades. Now Brighton Blades is back for a second time. They received $5,000 last round. They are growing their business internationally. They sell their unique knives all over the US, and they're going into expanding the number of retail. The last round, they used the funds to increase the quality of photographs and videos. They found that online, they weren't seen as high quality as the product actually is. And so they needed to raise the quality that they're perceived as online. And so that's what they did the first round. Now this time, we're recommending, they asked for 7,200, we're recommending 5,200 that they will use on additional advertising online to really get to the buyers that, for a lot of these stores they're currently not in. So expanding the distribution as well as expanding the sales nationally. Okay, the next one. This is Shirts to a T. And Brian has been growing this business quite a bit. You would be shocked at the revenue that he has. He would like to upgrade his website, as well as buy a new embroidery machine. His current embroidery, embroidery machine is, has lower capacity, and it's also older. And so he needs to get a new, higher capacity machine before the old one expires. This will help him grow, so he's focused on increasing capacity and also increasing his sales online. He asked for 12,250, which is a small part of the investment in that embroidery machine. I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think it costs something like $60,000. And so we recommend giving him the full value of what he asked for.
Can you explain to us their approximately yearly revenue that comes into the county and how much they expect to increase it with this?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, and those are, actually, I don't share those numbers generally because the, the relationship we have with them is those numbers are private, but he's looking at increasing his sales from where they are now to, which is well into the six figures, at least a couple hundred thousand more. And, and he will need additional employees too. Okay, the next one is Morgan Gym. Marina owns the Morgan Gym and the Mountain Green Gym. And she actually applied for both gyms, but due to the amount of funds, we were only able to fund improvements for the Morgan Gym. However, this improvement that she's going to do is online, is to make it easier for customers to have an experience online, as well as attracting new, new customers to the gym. And that online exposure is going to help both the Mountain Green and the, and the Morgan Gym, so we wanted to fund this request completely. She was asking for 6,000, we want to fund it 6,000. Okay, next one. Is the Phoenix House. I don't know how many of you know about the Phoenix House in Mountain Green, but Chris Olson has been doing very well in the Phoenix House, but if you've tried to go, you've either driven by and missed it and had to go back to it because of lack of signage on the street, or you've had a hard time finding parking or making it through the drive-through. So he's asked for $10,000 to use for additional signage, for visit, street visibility, as well as some reconfiguring of the parking lot that would help not only his business, but also the other businesses in that center. And so it will make traffic flow, especially when kids are, when kids are being picked up and dropped off at the childcare center. It'll make that much easier for, for them. He also wants to do some remodeling in a cold storage room and his kitchen. So we recommend funding his ask. Okay, the next one. By the way, the food at the Phoenix House is amazing, and they have great customer service. Okay, the next one is for the SOS Drive Thru. If you've been to Parkside Lanes and tried their pizza lately, you'll see that they have been expanding their menu. What they would like to do is create an outdoor patio in the area next to it that would, and also invite food trucks to come in. So their growth has been primarily not only, they, they see this, this is bringing more people and bringing more dining options to Morgan, the city of Morgan and Morgan County, as well as helping to promote their own, the drinks that they have, as well as their world famous, or soon to be world famous pizza. And that's, we, they asked for 10,000. We looked at, based on all the other opportunities, we were, we recommend funding this at 5,000. Okay? That's it. Any questions?
I got a question for you, Andrew. I, this is, for small businesses, this is just really exciting to see. I, I love the fact that we're able to, well, first of all, that these dollars are appropriated for this. We can't use them for roads or for other things, so I, I think it's just an exciting process. The question I have is, are we limited to 50,000 a year? I, I did the math real quick. I think our shortfall is $8,250. But are we just limited to the 50 for helping these small businesses?
That decision's going to be, based on the commission. You guys allowed us to have that 50,000 for this time, so I, I, we can work with the state. We'll work with Commissioner Fackrell, but when that, when those grants are applied for, the state is open to whatever amount you want to recommend that is given to businesses. We do want to make some changes with the Morgan County Grant if we're given the opportunity to do it again. Many of the businesses spend much more than the grant that they receive in matching funds, but we've never required matching funds. This next time, we want to make matching funds from the business a requirement.
I guess, Commissioner Fackrell, I see these funds kind of getting a little bit healthier as time goes on, and this would be a great opportunity.
We wanted to start with the 30,000, and actually it was, we asked for 33,000 because we had enough businesses that needed those funds. So you approved, the commission approved 3,000 additional, so we spent 33,000 last time and increased it based on the same comments that you have now, increased it to the 50,000. And I'm hearing from businesses all over the county asking me, when's the next one so that they can apply? So the, the awareness is out there and more businesses are looking, and the requirement here is like with the Fast Track Grant, that you have to be an existing business, you have to have your operational structure in place so that you can, and you have to have some growth so that we can see that by adding additional funds, we can only help to accelerate that growth. Is that it? Okay, one thing I would like to be able to pass around is this article. This is a magazine on all the businesses of the year in Utah. And our business of the year for Morgan and Davis County is Kim Blackburn with Innovate a Structural Solutions. And it's been interesting, we cover Davis and Morgan County, and more than not, the business of the year is a business in Morgan County, so. Thank you for all of your support.
Can we have John speak for a minute? John? Can you speak for a minute? Don't run out. I need you to just speak for a minute to the commission and just tell us the process of what you went through. And how the budget came about.
The budget, we had really good success last year. It was, it's fun to watch these businesses with just a little bit of investment. And I, I would venture guess that every dime you're spent, you're going to get back from sales or more. But the process is, we put it out on a number of different sources, the Chamber website, a number of different sources, and told people to apply. And I don't remember how many applications we had.
We had 15?
15 applications, so there was quite a few. And then, and then what we do is we meet three times and go over the applications. And, and what we're, we're not looking for startups. We don't want to do startups because that doesn't make a lot of sense because sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. We're looking for a number of criteria. How many employees are you going to hire? What's it going to do as far as increase in sales? And we also look at, at what, pseudo what their financials are because we can't ask them a lot about that, but anyway, so. And then we all meet and we go over them and talk about those different criteria. And I think in those discussions, it come up that next year we want to require a match. So I think that's going to make a big difference, but... So anyway, we were, I think the first year, how many did we have the first year? 13?
Nine.
Nine. And this year we had 15. And I think as the word gets out, we'll get more and more. And, and I think one of the things that I, I've asked James to do is see if there's any more grant money that we can get from the state along with this, this grant money we're getting on the Part A funds, so.
But one thing I want to do is because the state made those funds available before, they don't know what the county's doing right now. So we need to make a big deal of letting the state know who these businesses are that we're supporting with the grant that results from the funds that they give us.
And one of the things that we talked about last year, and I think we're going to try and do it this year, is get some newspaper coverage with pictures and those kinds of things. Not only if, in the Morgan County News, but if we can, in the Ogden Standard and, and those kinds of things. Just to, to show that we're forward-thinking and businesses are thriving up here, so. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion regarding item number five? Okay, now we'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the 2023 business grants offered through the Rural Economic Opportunities Grant Part A funding as presented.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move to item number six. This is a request from Utopia for inter-local agreement.
Chair, do you mind if, I know that the public hearing was advertised for 6:00 PM. I don't know if we want to maybe let that play through and then jump back.
Yeah, the financial one we have to do at 6:00 or should be doing at 6:00. So let's hold on that. Let's move to our public hearings. Leslie, I'll start with you. So this is a public hearing for an amendment to the 2023 Morgan County budget.
I've worked with department heads, and I've prepared the first quarter budget adjustments for you. We will be making some changes to fund balance, department adjustments, and grants. Resolution should have been in your pocket. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you want to explain maybe why some of it? I mean, I can explain why some of it was needed, because last year, when we did the budget, we did not include in the grants.
Some grants, some grants we did.
Some grants we did, and some we did not. And so we needed to, we have to go and put, we've already put in the revenue, but we didn't have a budget item to match that. And so that's why some of this request is being requested.
For that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene the budget hearing.
Second.
A motion, a second, to adjourn the public meeting and convene the budget hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in our public hearing for item G, Amendment to the Morgan County 2023 Budget. Okay, seeing no public comment, look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now back in the public meeting on item G, Amendment to the Morgan County 2023 Budget.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution CR-23-05, a resolution of the Morgan County Commission adopting certain amendments to Morgan County's 2023 Budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Leslie. That was painless. Maybe not preparing this stuff for, but the meeting. Okay. Do we want to go back to other items? Do you want to hear the other public hearing items at this point? The financial one is the one that we need to hear at 6:00. Any preference, commissioners?
I don't know if we have a lot of residents here for these public hearings. I don't want to talk about the public hearings.
The only question I have is, I know, I think Justin Reese has to go to a planning commission meeting or something at the city. If he's still here.
He's already gone.
I think he just left.
Okay.
Was he here for the film?
He was here for that, but if we don't.
Is Aaron Leach here?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, that's a pretty quick one for the Utopia one that I derailed just a few minutes ago. So that's number five.
Okay.
Or six, sorry.
All right, should we go back to that then? Let's do that.
I think, yeah, if we could.
All right, so back to action item number six, a request from Utopia for inter-local agreement.
So I can introduce this one, but maybe Aaron could come up as well to answer some of your questions. There were, I sent out a couple emails, and I think I forwarded everything I received back. The only change that was suggested by our Public Works Director is on page two of the agreement, paragraph three, prior to, it used to start with "Utopia may install." There's two sentences before that that I've added that say, "Installation beneath the roadway pavement will be trenchless construction," parentheses, "boring" when practical. And second sentence is, "Utility alignments should be selected to minimize impacts to the roadway pavement." And Brett just requested that those go in, that those, that language goes in just to show the preference for that, to not disturb the roadways when possible. And then Aaron confirmed in email that that's fine and that they typically try to do that anyway.
We bore.
So, other than that, it, we did add an approved as-to-form for Utopia's attorney to sign as well. But other than that, it's the same document that was sent out in the packet.
So I understand the inter-local agreement and what's accomplished, but what's the business plan and model? What, this is to install fiber, but is there a plan for where you're moving to do that?
So as you are aware, we partner with private service providers. Utopia's a government entity, and there was a customer that one of our service providers, establishment in Mountain Green. I can't remember the exact address, I apologize, but it goes along the old highway up there from, at the mouth of the canyon.
It's up Highland Road.
Yeah. Or is that old highway?
Old highway.
Yeah, so, so we want to work with you. As you know, we don't have very, we're just a government entity, and we don't have lots of revenue to cover a full, big county build. But I've been working with Commissioner Fackrell on getting some sort of partnership potentially, you know, whether it be through ARCA funds or some other subsidy that we could work towards facilitating a fiber to something build. But currently, this one, this request is just for us to, allow us to use the right-of-way to service the customer. As we lay infrastructure, we try to incorporate enough capacity there to service potentially others along that path. So our goal is wherever we go, we try to serve the customers that we pass.
So is your installed fiber and backbone used by other retail providers of internet service? Or when you say customers, do you mean a retail customer?
Retail customers, yeah. We wholesale our services, so it would be retail customers. Those retail customers, as we pass the, you know, with our infrastructure, we make those potential addresses orderable, and then, you know, those customers could potentially sign up for service.
You're welcome to come down my road.
I'm sure you guys have heard the success of Morgan City, so we try to improve every situation we can.
One thing I, I know we had a problem the other day, and it was Utopia's fault. On Monday, so it took a while.
We're willing to work with the county.
That was county-wide.
Willing to work with the county on any project that they have. Unfortunately, you know, the way our funding mechanism works, we have to partner with the county or a city currently right now.
So you have no plans other than that one area right now until we come up with the plan, is that correct?
Well, as we get closer, I mean, if there is any businesses or anything like that, you know, that, I know when Browning was up in the city, we had potential plans to go service that customer. That would have passed a lot of infrastructure, you know, premises. So unfortunately, that one fell by the wayside. But I'm hoping that we get more businesses and stuff like that as we pass, because, you know, typically, our service providers are interested in servicing businesses right now. Unfortunately, I know it seems kind of like cherry picking, but our goal is to pass, you know, with infrastructure to support, support the customers.
So this isn't going to cost us anything right now?
This does not cost you anything.
Okay. Later at night.
Well, I mean, we have three different flavors, right? I mean, we have this initial flavor where Utopia's puts forth the revenue to, sorry, the expense to go service a customer. We have a different flavor where we partner with cities in the sense that they want just enough, you know, they want their infrastructure, like all their facilities, to be hooked up with fiber. And then lastly, the, is a full-blown partnership.
Okay.
So, but this one is not a full-blown partnership or a partnership with the county to service county facilities. So this one strictly just allows us to use the right-of-way. And we'll follow all the permitting rules of, that the county has set forth. I know, I think, you know, Mountain Green's not, is unincorporated, right? So the county's managing all of that, so.
Which means, Tina, this is going right by your house.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll look for a motion on item number six.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the inter-local cooperation agreement between Morgan County and Utopia.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Fackrell, film commission permit?
Yes. Did you send that over to everybody?
He did, prior to the meeting.
I did. So, and I apologize here, too. I thought I didn't have the digital version, but then I looked back, and it was from Justin Reese, not Commissioner Fackrell. So I did have that. So I apologize, Chair, for writing my handwritten notes on the document and scanning it. But I didn't write too much.
They were handwritten?
They were handwritten, but I think the only point I made is I recall that Commissioner McConnell had at one point suggested maybe upping the insurance requirements, maybe because of inflation or just the nature of certain types of activities. And if they're filming, I don't know what they'd be filming, but, you know, potentially dangerous things. That was really the only substantive comment I had. Other than that, it would just be designating who would be the one receiving these permit applications.
So one of the things with this, the only reason why we had to come up with this is because the state of Utah Film Commission has asked us to get on the list so that we can be an approved film commission destination if they want to. We've already had one person call us in the last week that would like to do a filming event in July, or June and July. And so that's why this had to become critical for us to be able to get the permitting process started. And we also have to have this to go to the state to let them know that we are involved in allowing filming to be done in our county.
So if we, if we sign and approve this, do, can they specify where they want the filming, and we have to accept it, or do we have a choice at that point?
We have a choice.
Okay.
We have a choice, and so does the private landowner. Because a lot of these are going to be on private properties, and this just allows us to be able to say, we're willing to allow filming to come into the county. And in the, in the contract, or in the film permit, um, I don't see the, basically, they're going to have to take care of things themselves. It just allows us to be on the filming, and we've got to be able to allow it. You know, if they wanted to come in and do pornography, I don't think we can do that. But I don't know that we can stop them. According to you, Garrett, we're going to have to determine that.
Well, not according to me. According to the Supreme Court. As one justice famously said, "I'll know it when I see it."
Yeah.
You know, when describing obscenity, but, you know.
So I'm hoping that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think at least this gives some control.
Yes.
So we're just looking to approve an updated form of permit that includes your handwritten comments and adjustments. And you've updated them.
I didn't have any adjustments. It was just if we wanted to up the liability policy from the $2 million to the $3 million. It discusses a special events committee, which I don't think has been established yet, so we probably have to, or the commission would have to create a committee, and then...
Or remove it from the application.
What was that?
Or remove it from the application altogether. I mean, are we required to have a committee?
I mean, if all it's doing is receiving this insurance information, we don't need to have a committee.
So maybe it would just be received by Morgan County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And usually, their insurance amount is based on what they're doing, so we need to know really what they're doing and what expenses are involved, right?
Right.
It's pretty rare not to see commercial enterprises with at least a $3 million CGL policy now. Three, five, you know, three for a single event and five aggregate. But we just do the, the aggregate of three, I think that's reasonable.
And then on the last page, it does have a Morgan County insert contact name. So I guess that would just be who is receiving these film permit applications.
Who has historically received these, do you know?
It's been Justin, well, I don't know, since Justin's been on board, it's Justin. He's the one that's pushing this. Or not pushing it, but our tourism board.
Well, but our tourism board can't receive the application.
Right.
It's got to be an employee.
So I would suggest the clerk's office, but, you know, either that or the RHR.
Because Leslie left.
Our administrative assistant.
Yeah, because Leslie's left. Makes it easy to volunteer.
She'll get it to the right place.
And I know this has been a long meeting already, but why are we bringing this before us?
Because we need to have it, we need to have it approved so that that way we can get on the film commission's list.
But it has to, it has to come, though, before us as a commission board?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, it does. Has to be approved by us to allow it to be done in our county.
I think updates of forms wouldn't, but...
I think it's already allowed, right? Because we're just updating the existing.
Have we, but this isn't, this is a new one. If this is one that we had before, it wasn't, we didn't have it, we did not find it. So when we were going through to find out if we had a film permitting basis, there was none. And so the tourism, the T-TAB board went and found somebody else's from another city, made the modifications that would fit within our county, and this is what they submitted.
Oh, so this is not in existence?
No, this is not.
So it's not just an update?
No, it's not an update.
This is a whole new deal?
It's a whole new thing.
Gotcha.
The other thing would be to remove paragraph 13, because it references a municipal code. And as I've looked through the county code, we don't...
That's not ours.
That's not ours. And there are certain restrictions on, like conditional use permits, gravel pits, things of that nature, but there isn't, you know, just specifically. So I think we could just say, maybe just have contractual agreement that they won't have excessive or unusually loud noise between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00, and just remove the code reference. And I do have the digital copy, or the digital form that I can update and recirculate for that change.
What I'm going to suggest is that since we didn't get this form until today, is that we postpone it until next week, or next time, our next meeting. Then, I mean, we still have time, but I'd like to get it approved so we can submit it to the state film commission, so we can be on the list of approved film-producing counties.
And then it can go out in the packet to...
For next time.
So that it's just in the record.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, sure, that's a motion.
A second.
A motion and a second to postpone item number seven until the May 16th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. All right. I think there's folks here for all these items, so we're just going to keep going down the list unless there's concern about that. So, Josh, we'll move to you. Item number eight, discussion decision. CW Land, request of the range preliminary plat. Jeremy, not Josh, Jeremy.
Thank you, and members of the county commission. Can you hear me all right? I've lost my voice.
We can.
You can, right? And so, item number eight on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.009. So, CW Land co-requests approval of the range preliminary plat. This is actually the preliminary and final plat. No, wait, that's not correct, just preliminary. Just preliminary plat. So, it's actually renamed from the Warner West Concept Plan from an application from last year. This is a proposed subdivision of 43 half-acre and larger lots. Let's look in over my notes. So, zoning requirements dictate 20,000 square feet for these lots. There are a few lots on this plat, in fact, I'll point it out now. Yeah, I think these few lots that are larger than 20,000 square feet, we've already included a stipulation in your staff report for those to be addressed before final plat recordation. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire comments, and again, the engineer comments refer to the size of the lots, but then also to secondary access. The secondary access concerns the Frontier Estates plat that's actually being recorded pretty much now. What's going to happen is, commissioners, if you'll see, the secondary access will come right at the top of the range there. While the Frontier Estates project is being developed, it'll provide secondary access for, for this project for purposes of recordation. And so, based on these items, staff is recommending approval. A recommendation of approval did come from the Planning Commission with, with member Wilson absent. And I, along with Josh, can answer any technical questions you may have. The applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Questions for staff?
We had a question during the public comment period with respect to the UDOT's approval of the access onto Trappers Loop Road. Could we know what the status of that is?
Yeah, that's underway, and applicant expects to receive that before final plat recordation. Would you want to speak to it?
Just Chase Pregram, representing CW Land. Yeah, we've met with UDOT, we have their notes, we've held a meeting with them, and Josh, I think, was in attendance in that meeting. And, yeah, I mean, basically, we, before final, we have to submit our final plan set and get that approved, but, you know, conceptually, they're on board with the idea and the concept and, but we still have to jump through a few hoops with them and make sure that they're on board. They've got to sign up on all engineering and plan design, so, but ultimately, things are progressing that way and look good, so.
Is there a condition specific to that?
In your staff report, yes.
Okay.
Or not for UDOT, no, not for UDOT. The stipulation there is for the size of the lots.
There was also a question on the, in the planning report that talks about, there is no, nothing dedicated for a park, and that was one of the comments we received about, you know, this neighborhood going and using their park. And I'm just curious if there's any kind of plans for a park in this area, and if not, why and should it be?
There's nothing in our code that requires the creation of a park for a subdivision. If there were a development agreement that was attached to this, and that development agreement defined that there should be a park, then we could require that. But our subdivision regulations have nothing related to parks. They are proposing open space. There's two parcels there that are open space. As far as the subdivision to the north, this subdivision using their amenities, the unfortunate thing is the subdivision to the north has public streets, and you can't prohibit the public from driving and parking on public streets.
So, is that park in the other development, is that a public park also, or is it?
I would imagine it was a HOA park. I would imagine it was open space as part of that subdivision. I'd have to look at the plat to see if it was labeled as private, but I know the HOA put in the amenities that were there.
And they maintain them.
And that would be part of an HOA agreement.
Okay.
Is the intention for these roads to be public roads in this project?
Excuse me, are we allowed any questions of this hand?
No, sir.
Well, the secondary access is a surprise.
You're not allowed comments at this point. Thank you.
But I'll make a comment. You know, being in this business for many years, there are requirements with the different utilities and also roadways that you connect to. UDOT is quite stringent in their requirements, and they make sure and do the analysis. They may require the developer to do a traffic analysis, I don't know that, but they'll do what they believe is necessary for their roadway. But I would say that similarly to water, similarly to sewer, our ordinance has geologic review. So, the concerns that do exist, the developer will be required to address those concerns through the process, would be my comment.
And these, these roads, the public roads will be become, are they going to be a 60-foot, or is there a different?
No, the only standard we have for a public road for a subdivision is 60 feet of right-of-way.
Okay, so the road may only be 25 feet or 30 feet?
Well, the right-of-way is not the paved portion.
Okay.
So, the right-of-way, the 60 feet of right-of-way includes 24 to 26 feet of paved street, and then it also includes curb, gutter, sidewalk. And for this, typically, the sidewalks are separated from the curb and gutter, and there's a median, there's a landscape strip in between two of them. And that's based on our adopted street elevation.
So, this one is not under a development agreement, then?
No, it is now.
So, then, how do we verify that, I mean, how can we, I'm just curious, I don't know. I was looking through the code today to find out some different things on it. Curb and gutter trails, open space, parks.
Can't require trails, open space, or parks.
And sidewalks?
Sidewalks are a requirement based on our adopted street standards and are defined in the subdivision regulations. Eight dash 12 dash 44, I believe.
44? 44?
44 might be streets.
It shows sidewalks on this cross-section that's on the preliminary plat. That left-hand side shows the road cross-section and the sidewalks.
So, the street typical cross-section that they're showing on their preliminary plat is, meets our minimum standards.
No. Okay. Would you like to hear from the applicant? Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, one quick question. Sorry, Chase. You do have those two big open space parcels. What's your guys' thoughts there?
So, and the reason those are there is we've done a preliminary wetland assessment that would indicate that those areas most likely are wetlands. We have not finalized any delineation with the core. That would have to happen before we go to final plat, but it's been under snow for the last six months, so we're gearing up to do that. It's probably likely a June-July time when we do that delineation, but ultimately, that delineation will kind of dictate the final boundaries of that. If there is leftover acreage, which we anticipate there will be between the wetland area and just kind of remnant open space parcel, we plan to try to amenitize it with some type of pavilion, park, path, playground. I mean, we don't know exactly what that will be. We've entertained a dog park, we've entertained, you know, we're still kind of trying to conceptualize what that might be and program that space, but at the end of the day, we want to do something there, if we can, that would benefit, you know, the neighbors, and I'm sure you'll get some crossover from Trappers Point and...
So, you have discussed part?
Yeah, we've discussed it, it's just, we don't know. It's hard to go plan and draw something hard, you know, that's fixed to the property and the plan now without knowing ultimately what will happen with the wetland delineation. And so, we have to wait for that process to play out, and our wetland engineer, once his delineation is done, and we've worked through the core, we can better define that. But ultimately, this is open space parcels that would be owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA, and then any amenities, if we do choose to add them, would be maintained by the HOA. Again, we're not, we don't have to provide any type of amenity or park or open space, but we feel it's in the community's best interest, and we feel it would make the community more attractive. And, you know, it's a place to gather and public, public space that the community could enjoy. So, yeah, it's hard to say today what that looks like, but we are exploring those ideas.
So, in your discussion, have you discussed the, the concerns of the other HOA that...
It's the first time I've heard any concern about an HOA, and granted, I mean, technically, I guess legally, it should be, you know, each homeowner has access to their own amenity and their own project.
Sure.
If they pay HOA to, and in a perfect world, those probably wouldn't overlap, but in the real world, people will be friends with their neighbors and who knows, you know? So, it's hard to police and it's hard to project, but I would imagine you're going to have some overlap between the two amenities and the two projects, and some of that's natural. But, you know, if it was out of hand and the other HOA had a major concern and it was becoming a problem, we'd be happy to address that with our residents, but it's hard to say how that will play out.
I have a question, and I know it does not show in here, but working through internet problems throughout the county, and it's not in the code, Josh, needs to be put in the code, and in every development, there needs to be some kind of an internet, I mean, if you're putting in utilities, you've got to make sure internet goes in there also, or at least a conduit to go in there, because that's some of the problems we've been having with getting service to everybody for the internet, is if you can put it in while it's dug up, put it in.
Yeah, that's the ideal time to do it, when the trench is exposed and the excavator's on site, and it's easier to do it that way than to do it after the fact.
Well, most of the time, you can. That's what we're doing, having to deal with up in the upper part of the Highlands, is that they can't get it because there's no poles.
Right.
And there's no underground, and they should have done it when they had it, but they didn't. So, that needs to be maybe put in, my request would be to have it put into the code somehow or another, that that be part of any development. I don't care about some of the other stuff, but that one, then I don't get phone calls about internet all the time.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right. Any comments, and if not, we'll look for a motion on item number eight.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the range preliminary plat, application number 23.007, for a 43-lot subdivision of land located at approximately 6651 Trappers Loop Road in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and what the conditions listed in the staff report dated May 2nd, 2023, with the following additional condition, that the UDOT approval of the primary access onto Trappers Loop Road be finalized prior to the final plat approval.
Second?
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Wilson. Okay, Josh, back to you. Or Jeremy.
Ideally, I'll take over all of these, one at a time. So, item number nine in tonight's agenda is for application number 23.011. Expert Enterprises LLC requests to combine two lots identified as parcel, the parcel numbers and serial numbers in your staff report into a single lot to create 14 condominium units within the buildings located, again, with those parcel numbers and serial numbers in your staff report. By condominiums, we do mean commercial flex space condominiums. There are actually 28 units reserved for in the concept plan. There is a store, there was a conditional use permit with the C1 designation for zoning administrator. That was actually sent out two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. So, that's been approved under our, under the staff, with staff, but this is just for the 14 spaces now. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire comments. There were for the construction of the storage units, again, under the CUP, for Mountain Green Fire, for MGFD. There have been no comments since then. There are engineer comments. These are minimal, there are three minor comments that can be addressed before, excuse me, before recordation. But again, this, this meets all minimum code requirements for preliminary plat approval. The staff is recommending approval tonight. Again, Commissioner Wilson was absent for the Planning Commission meeting, but otherwise it was unanimous for a recommendation of approval. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jeremy. So, this is a consolidation plat, is that right?
Yeah, there's two lots becoming one, and then the 14 units that are shown on the right that are part of Phase One are being created as condominiums.
But to do that, they have to come back and do a condominium plat?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yes. This is just for preliminary plat.
This is just combining the two lots, is all?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
Is there a reasoning for all of this? For the...
Yes. Is that for me or for them?
I don't care who. Whoever wants to answer it, I mean, Jared wants to answer it, it's okay, too.
No, no.
I don't care.
Yeah, maybe mine might be a little quicker and more concise, but, so, Blair Gardner, I'm the developer. Originally, we wanted to do 28. Due to previous staff, we, or administration, we identified that keeping the north building that's already there is the best and highest best use for the property, which therefore created some limitations on putting more flex space and more condo. So, that's one of the number-one reasons. The secondary reason is to combine the lots, is because where the property boundary was, was already identified to be removed, which allowed the 14 units to be positioned farther to the west. So, that's the primary reason why it changed from a 28 flex space to just simply 14, and the future use, which is what you see here, again, given a lot of different considerations and economic determination, is going to be storage. Larger, you know, 12-by-40s, there will be some smaller units there, but we'll come into that on a different meeting. But the current motivation, obviously, is to get the condominiumization. I do have buyers that are ready to close on the properties. And so, the buildings are complete. We actually just did a final walkthrough yesterday. But the condition of that final is subject to, and being able to transfer that to new owners is the recordation and the condominiumization.
But, okay, so I'm coming back to my question.
Yes, sir.
You've created three buildings.
Correct.
You've identified, one, two, three, four, five, 10?
14.
14 spaces within that building.
Yes, sir.
But you have not recorded a condominium plat or condominium declaration with respect to it. So, you can't convey any of those spaces.
Understandable. Yeah, as I mentioned, I need to condominiumize them to give them individual tax ID numbers before I can.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you're aware, I actually currently have buyers that are under contract to close on them once, once I finalize those condominiumizations.
Okay, all right.
I'm glad you asked, though, because that helps clarify.
Well, and there's a couple of issues with the staff report. One, the motion for approval here is the planning commission's recommendation as opposed to the commission's motion. Unless I'm missing it, it's somewhere else. And then, secondly, it says allowing for a 14-unit commercial subdivision of land and the combination of two parcels. So, I'm going to recommend that we strike out allowing for a 14-unit commercial subdivision of land. I know that's what you're contemplating, but the consolidation of these two lots paves the way for that, so to speak. But I don't, I don't want to suggest that we're actually approving the 14 separate units you've identified until you bring in your plat of condominium. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense. I thought that the condominium plat required a preliminary plat prior to them bringing the condominium plat back, so...
Well, it likely does. It...
So, I thought preliminary plat, why is this met the code requirements for the preliminary plat?
Well, I, I'm not reading your specific code in terms of doing that. This clearly meets the requirements to do a consolidation, okay? And we're going to consolidate it, and then you could come back in. You could have conceivably brought in a condominium plat and accomplished the consolidation and the plating of the condominium in a single step.
That's the goal of this.
This is two steps.
This is based upon recommendations of the staff, as far as this process. Because our ultimate goal was to do the combining of both lots, so we can adjust the, you know, eliminate the center property line to allow the building structures to be where they're currently at, in conjunction with the condominiumization, as a preliminary, of which, based upon conditions of any engineering, would satisfy and move to final to allow the final condominiumization plat with the combination of both lots.
So, you're going to have to point me to your code reference then for this.
So, there's a list in the state statute about condominiums, which is kind of what we read through, but it doesn't list any specific submittal requirements, which is why I thought...
So, the condominium act, the plat requirements in 57-8-13. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's the requirement to create a condominium under the State Condominium Association Act.
Right.
And I, and this doesn't meet any of those requirements.
Okay.
It doesn't. I'm sorry. You don't have your datum elevations, you haven't identified the units. That's coming closer to what I'm looking at in our plat, in our packet. And again, maybe I'm missing what you're doing here.
Well, yeah, again, step one is to combine the lots as a commercial subdivision to eliminate center. And then, the preliminary is for the condominiumization, based upon recommendations of how to proceed to allow each condo to have their individually, individual tax ID number.
So, I see this is the short field landing Phase 2 improvement plan that's up on the screen, okay? I don't know what your unit descriptions are going to be, and whether or not, are you creating the buildings as condominiums and just selling the units within the paint-to-pain, pain-to-pain structure?
Yes, sir. So, the buildings will be identified, and the units themselves will be, are identified as individuals.
This is not a condominium plat yet. This is, I agree, this is the first step to consolidate the two lots into a single lot. But then, you're going to have to come in, from my perspective, with a preliminary condominium plat, through our plating process, get the recommendation, and then a final condominium plat approval. Because this doesn't meet the requirements of 57-8-13. This consolidates two lots into one. That's all we're doing right now. And then, and then you can come back and do that process. But you need to work with your engineer to do the plat, because it doesn't have, when you divide a parcel like this in, under a condominium plat, it's the same as a horizontal subdivision, except you have to add in the vertical elements. And there are no vertical elements shown, because literally, the buyer of your unit has to recreate the space that you identify in that plat, both horizontally and vertically. And so, this is the first step to getting to where you want to go. There could have conceivably been some combination of it.
Yeah, and that was our goal, so there must have been a disconnect in relation to that, because ultimately, the goal for tonight was to do those as combined. So, if we made our mistake as the developer, then I'm happy to take that responsibility and move to the, to the, to the next, you know, evolution of what needs to happen, for sure.
So, is, is the person that prepared this your engineer?
Yeah, Nate Reeves, Reeves &amp; Associates, in conjunction with, through the application process.
Yeah, so, I mean, it will say on it, plat of condominium.
Yeah.
Not an improvement plan. Because the plat, I think, we're approving is earlier.
Well, it is modified, and that's one of the reasons why we put it through that process. So, and we can work, we can work together through staff to make that happen. Yeah, Josh?
Okay.
Any other questions, guys?
No, but Robert better make the motion.
Yes, please.
Let's see. So, this is here. All right. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the short field landings preliminary consolidation plat, application number 23.011, combining two parcels into a single lot located at approximately 4032 West, 5800 North, based on the findings and what the conditions listed in the staff report dated May 2, 2023.
Don't you need to go and have the other part in it with the additional plating, the condominium?
Not to make this approval.
Okay.
For them to come back.
They'll have to come back for them.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Let me ask the commission a question.
Sure.
So, from my perspective, they could, well, so this was for preliminary. I think they probably ought to go ahead and finalize the consolidation, and then come back with a preliminary and a final condominium plat. Okay.
That makes sense.
All right.
Do them both together. Okay, we are on to section H, public hearings. We have three, three more public hearings this evening. So, we're going to make lots of motions to go in.
We have another break?
We're going to take a quick break?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're going to take a quick break.
Yeah, and then, there's a lot of places to start at seven. Really? You'll be there till midnight.
With my vehicles. We won't be here that soon.
There's people to speak to.
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to reconvene our meeting. We'll ask you to take your seat if you're in the audience. We are on item H, public hearing, number one, item number one. This is application by Justin and Heidi Crouch, approval and amendment to the future land use map designation and rezone of property from A22RR5.
Thanks. This is application number 23.004. The applicants are Justin and Heidi Crouch, properties located at 3825 North Lost Creek Road. It's approximately 10.25 acres, and the current zoning is split zoning A20 and RR1. Future land use map designation is agriculture. The applicant has proposed a rezone of the agriculture portion of the property, not the RR1 portion, from agriculture to rural residential five-acre minimum, and a change to the future land use map from agriculture to rural residential five acres. Staff reviewed the application. We believe that it meets the intent of the general plan. Future anticipated use of the property is to divide it in two, to create two five-acre lots. Plan Commission reviewed the application as well. They heard it on April 13, and after a brief discussion, they recommended approval of both the future land use map amendment as well as the rezoning.
Okay.
So, is there plans to go and have two lo, I mean, in these two lots, is it two homes? Because it seemed like there was just one home in the middle of it. So, how is that going to work?
So, typically, if they divide it in two, each lot would be allowed to have one home and attached accessory dwelling unit right now.
You say there is one now?
No, I said what it would allow is each lot would be allowed one home, but then, we, our code does allow for internal accessory dwelling units as well right now. And the existing home is kind of towards the northern edge there.
Yeah, that's why, so...
Commissioner McCall, did you have a comment?
No, I think we can open up the public hearings.
Okay. Any, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in public hearing for item H1, the Justin and Heidi Crouch rezone. We did not receive any sign-ups on the list at the back of the room for this particular item, but if there's any public that would like to address the commission. Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second, then.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now back in a public meeting.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
What?
I know, it's kind of weird, huh?
Okay. No questions or comments? All right, we'll look for a motion on item H1.
I move to approve Crouch's future land use map and rezone map amendments, application number 23.004, changing 10.25 acres from A-20 to RR, oh, A-20 slash RR1 to RR5, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated May 2, 2023.
Before we second it, didn't you say, Josh, that they were going to keep the RR1 zone?
Yeah, they just, they just want to rezone the agriculture portion of RR5.
Do I need to state that differently then?
Which is the 10.25 acres, right?
No, that includes it all.
Is that an entire thing?
The agriculture portion is 7.85 acres.
So, if we just add it to the motion, RR5 slash RR1?
Yeah, to rezone it to RR1 slash RR5. Yeah, that, that would work.
So, does that affect...
Well, and then, you have to change the acreage too, don't you?
Yeah, you should. Because if it's going to stay RR1 for part of it, then the other part, the 7.2 some odd acres?
Only split.
Is going from A20 to R5, RR5.
Yeah, so the, the rezone portion of the 10.25 acres or whatever, the 7.88.
So, we're only doing that one, then? So, then what happens to their frontage?
Their frontage stays RR1.
Stays RR1.
Which means it's only 200 feet for the, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So...
So, we change it 10.25 to 7.
I think your motion, yeah, that changing the 10 point, or the 10.25 to 7.88 acres, the A20 portion to RR5.
Right. And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is everybody clear on what the motion is?
Okay.
Hold on.
Let's restate the motion, just to be clear on it.
Before you do it, okay, I know you're, but I have a question on this. If we're changing 7.88 acres to two lots of 5.0, I mean, 5 acres?
We're not creating any lots.
All we're doing, all we're doing is changing the zoning.
Just one lot. In the future, if they choose to divide it, they'll have to go through the subdivision plating process to do that.
Okay.
That's not part of the...
Okay. All right, because on 7.88, you can't have a RR5.
Well...
You can have it RR5, you just can't do two homes.
You can't do anything with the other one.
Yeah, you can, but... Yeah, you can, because both, if they divide it, so the both lots have a minimum of one acre in the RR one, then they can divide, they can, they can divide it in, into two. Because they have RR one on the frontage. And it's at least, at least two point two acres.
You're both right. He, he's right, if they, because of the combination of RR one and RR five here, they'll be able to do a two lot subdivision.
Okay.
You're right, if they were limited to seven point eight-eight acres of RR five, they couldn't divide it.
Okay, just had to have an understanding.
Okay, let's try this one more time. You ready?
Come on, ready? I'll second it.
Well, let me, let me, let me just, hold on. I move to approve the Crouch future land use map and rezone map amendments. Application number twenty-three point zero zero five, changing seven point eight-eight acres from A dash twenty to RR five.
And I'll second it.
Based on the findings listed in the staff report dated May second, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, everybody's clear on the motion now? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to section H, item number two. It's an amendment to Morgan County Code modifying section eight dash five C three.
Um, our current zoning ordinance allows the code to be changed in one of three ways. One, the county commission directs staff to write the text amendment. Or the planning commission directs staff to write the text amendment. Or a member of the public can submit an application to change the text, pay the fee, and then be brought forward. Uh, Mr. Val Paul, several months ago, submitted a request to change the text to allow for a live-work dwelling unit option in the commercial, in the commercial zones. Uh, I worked closely with Mr. Paul, uh, to find a location in our code that it would fit, as well as to, uh, draft the language of it, to, to modify the language he submitted to be more in line with what our code would require with regards to site plan review, architectural design, things like that. Um, with that, staff is, uh, proposing, uh, the language that he, that he brought forward with our modifications. Uh, and those were attached as exhibit A, um, as part of, uh, your packet. If you have any questions about the text, um, I'd be willing to answer it. Planning commission recommends denial with a three-two vote.
Can you give me that reason, even though I listen to it?
The reasoning for the planning commission denial, um, they didn't think that it addressed all the, the issues that they could come up with. Um, they also, uh, thought that we already have a town center zoning, which allows the mul- the, the mul- uh, multi- the mixed use, um, and they didn't think that it belonged in all the commercial zones.
So Josh, what would be the difference between the, uh, well, what you're, um, showing to us now is this live-work versus, versus the town center, what's the di- or mixed use? What's the difference between the two and why couldn't we just use mixed use?
So we could use mixed use and add it to the other commercial zones, if that's what you prefer doing. Uh, with the live-work, this makes it so that every apartment or dwelling unit has to be attached to a specific business and the business owner has to live in one of the proposed units. Um, town center doesn't have those restrictions.
What about employees versus the owner?
Um, well, Val Paul might be able to speak a little bit more, uh, to kind of his vision of why he wanted this, which would probably address some of your questions.
Okay. It don't, it almost seems like it'd be more restrictive.
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is more restrictive. Um, so if you were to put in, um, a commercial development and you had the business owner living above, where the proposal is to allow for two dwelling units per business, to allow for, uh, employees or, or whoever else, plus the business owner. Uh, but if you do that, then any, any type of use in the use table that is hazardous in nature, the, the text that we provided would eliminate that use from even locating within the development.
Does that mean that each one of them within the, the development could potentially have this?
Yeah, so if you have a.
Or it's gonna be required?
You have a larger development that has multiple businesses in it. Each business could technically have a live-work option, but the business owner would have to be one of the, the tenants above it.
I'm just curious. Yeah, yeah, the biggest, biggest thing is, is before we came up with the town center, town center, we've got, we've got these pre-approved development units or development agreements for different things and it's not quite right in the middle of the town center. And so, you know, if it comes along with what we're trying to accomplish within a town center and to try to make sure that we have housing for people that need to work up here or choose to work up here, it sounds to me like a good idea, but somebody's gonna have to convince me otherwise. Or actually, at least explain it.
Well, let's let Val explain it.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for giving me a little bit of time, Val Paul from the Canyon View Commercial Subdivision. And it's so exciting to hear all the, you know, the positive feelings towards business in the area. We worked really hard to kind of pick up where the council owns there. The things that make a business really work is to have a convenient location. And right there, as you're coming through the mouth of the canyon, it's, it's perfect. Some other things is if you have some unique skills and the thing that brought this about is I'm a veteran, a veterinarian in the daytime and, um, what we found in some of my other practices is if I could have a technician stay on site, that I could offer a higher level of medical care to my patients. Because we're not necessarily have to pick them up and send them to Ogden to do the emergency care or urgent care. And so it's good for the staff member, uh, we can usually help them out with the cost of housing. Um, it's good for the business, we can provide expanded services that don't necessarily, um, can't be offered except in a bigger location. And, um, it's, it's an incidental use, meaning it's not the core of the business, but it's a flexible part of the business that can really make a difference. And there, it's not just the veterinary community that can, um, be benefited by this, there's many other businesses. Um, one of the things in the, in the business part, just to let you know, there's already fiber wire installed there. So you'll be happy, it's in the ground.
It's very good, I am very happy.
But there's times in, in different businesses where you can't get certain skilled labor because they don't live right here in Morgan County, but they, if they lived here, they could, you could have the type of business that you're wanting to expand. And some of those are some of the higher technical skills, you know, a doctor of veterinary medicine or a certified vet technician, those kind of things would be very beneficial. You can shift some of the services that are being offered in Ogden, right here to Mountain Green and to Morgan County. That's a benefit, not only for jobs and increased tax base, but, um, convenience as well. The, the request here is to just give businesses more flexibility in how they conduct things. And, and, you know, our vision of this is not necessarily to have the owner live on the premise, they can, but that they occupy a portion of that with maybe an employee or two that live within that business. And that gives the oversight that, you know, some people might be a little bit worried about, well, we're just gonna turn employees loose and let them live there and work there, that's really not how it is. So I might be working at the vet hospital and then at nighttime, I punch out and let my technicians and stay, stay there after hours and take care of the patients. So really not looking to have a mandate that the owner has to live in one of the units, but that they have to occupy the business portion of it with some flexibility of having the employees in the units. They could live there as well if they wanted to. And, uh, young vets that are getting started with some pretty high school loans, that's exactly what they would want to do. So, um, wanting the flexibility to decide on, you know, who lives there. The, the goal is not to have more living space necessarily, I think that there's other options to do that, but to say, can this component attract businesses to this area and fulfill that, you know, long-term vision that you've had of, you know, having multiple businesses in that, in that spot? So, um, I'm open to take any other questions you might have.
So Val, would there be a separation between the business area or quarters and then living quarters? I mean, is there, there be a defined separation between the two?
Yes. And it can be behind, it could be above. Usually the business is up front and center. You know, so you have the storefront, they come in, they take care of their business and then either upstairs or in the back is where the living arrangements would be.
So how high is the highest point on any of this?
Great question, um, commercial highway is up to thirty-five feet. And so then you would just have the architect and engineer say, okay, some businesses might just say, I just want one level and it's not, it's gonna be up to sixteen feet, others might go up to thirty-five and then they would address the access, how they need to, to make that work.
My personal opinion, I think it's a great idea. Just because, and this is something we've been dealing with here, is we're trying to find some, some living accommodations for those workers that are gonna be coming into our county because we don't have enough workers in our county to take on all of these jobs. Maybe we will have, but I know as a vet tech, you may be just getting out of college and need a place to stay and you can't afford anything in Morgan County. And so that's just my opinion, so, and I'll try to be quiet.
You don't need to be quiet, you're fine. Okay, questions for the applicant?
Have you thought through, felt like there's any cons to it, Val? As you've discussed it?
I don't, and I think sometimes we, we, human nature says, well, let's talk about these exceptions and these exceptions when the reality is, most of it's right here. You might have five or ten percent of this, um, business area that even takes this into account, that uses it. If it doesn't make sense to a business to have their employee there, they're not gonna spend the extra dollars to put this kind of infrastructure in on the housing. If it makes sense to say, hey, I can get skilled labor, I can have some extra expanded services, then that's gonna create a niche that other groups wouldn't be able to have. So I don't see a, a negative thing there, I think, I like the oversight, we've, we've addressed some of the concerns, you know, it's hazardous waste, it's not gonna be allowed, you know, no living quarters are gonna be allowed if there's a hazardous waste. We've not included the light manufacturing in this, because we just don't think that that's, you know, likely that you'll have those businesses need it.
So is this, is this built to suit then, or what are you, what are you building?
Or it could be, you know, here's a freestanding building with a vet clinic and we want to be able to put some living accommodations there for the technicians.
So you're just looking at this as an option if they were to?
Correct.
Do that?
Yeah, not everybody's.
You're not rebuilding something and trying to lease it or?
No, no, this, this has a lot of flexibility for those who want it, but for those who don't want it, they're not gonna put the added expense into it.
Josh, you had a comment?
The parking was another question people had and, you know, for instance, in a vet hospital, you need three parking stalls per exam room. And so you'd have to put that in on this, you know, if this is maybe two or three businesses on this four acre piece, eighteen of those, you know, or fourteen of those have to be allocated to the vet hospital in order to make sure that there's adequate parking. And, and so it's, it's the most restrictive parking applies, it's not the least restrictive parking applies. So you're not bumping into each other when it comes to parking. You oftentimes have different, you know, if your clients come in the daytime, then they go away and the person who, who's living there, you have one of the eighteen that you could use, so you're, you're not in a, in a jam for parking.
So Val, on from, so if, if a plot like this were to move forward, you get it recorded, you sell it, somebody comes in and puts in a structure, if they put in a structure that maybe they've, they've looked at both water and sewer and said, hey, this is what's gonna happen with the water and sewer for this structure, but if they add three living quarters, that could, that could greatly affect or change what they initially said was gonna be in that, how, how would you address that as far as that's concerned?
They'd be required to go through site plan review. So if they're retrofitting an existing commercial building, they're still required to come through site plan review, which means the planning commission and the county commission are gonna review the landscape plans, the lighting plans, the parking plans. They're gonna have to come back. If it's a new development and they're proposing both commercial and the live work, they're still coming back through site plan review. The subdivision there's already been platted, so they already have a will serve letter for all the lots that were created, uh, both from sewer and for water, they should've gotten that as part of the, the plating process. So, so I'm not sure the water and the sewer is a concern because they've already, those, those are already allocated for the service.
Sure. Well, but they allocated on the basis of a commercial use. And not a commercial plus a residential, so.
But if they've, if they've gotta come back through the process again?
It may be pretty difficult for a retrofit. It seems like this would work a lot better on new construction, you plan from the beginning and do it that way.
But as far as water service and sewer, all those regional upgrades were done to handle, you know, whatever might want to come to that area, so.
So I'm not saying they don't have the service, I'm saying that.
Yeah.
That your will serve letter may include a limitation that you will exceed if you were to add residential units on top of your commercial, particularly if everybody took the opportunity.
Yeah, correct, I agree.
So if, if, Josh, you've been saying that if it's not owner occupied for the residential, then they can't do like what he's talking about?
Well, one of the units has to be occupied.
Well, but he lives right across the street.
Yeah.
I say he's gonna live right across the street. He's not gonna live in there.
In the barn, in the dairy barn, that's my, that's where I'm going, yeah. Here's what I had in item number six, as far as the guidelines. The property owner shall occupy a portion of the business or residential area of the primary business unit. So there's oversight there, but not necessarily saying you have to live on premises, but you have to be, you have to have a viable business that's attached to that live-to-work, um, unit. And I think that gives a ton of flexibility, but, but there's not any of that haphazard nature of good luck, hopefully everything makes it through, so. So I, I don't see it as the property owner has to live in one of those units, but they have to occupy a portion of the business or a residential area of the business unit, that's how I see it. That's what item six is looking at.
So these obviously wouldn't be for sale, would they be rented?
Yeah, so the, the primary business drives that particular unit or building and, you know, so you can't, down later it says, you know, number nine, there's a deed of restricted covenant that says you can't separate the live-work from the business, they are attached.
So you can't just rent it to anybody else, you have to have it be an employee?
Yeah, it has to, they have to have, uh, part of the business operation in order to qualify. And that, that comes in your site review and when you're getting your business permit, you can't build one of these without having a viable business and, um, trying to think. I can't remember where it's at, but it was in one of these.
So I don't have a baseline objection to doing this. I, I have some questions and I think that we might need some refinement to what's being proposed. Live-work units work pretty well in some circumstances and not as well in others. I had a client that bought one in Summit County, it's very similar to the pictures that Josh sent us. It's a good-looking project. He, he moved in, he occupies the residential space above it while he's building another home in Summit County. But he wants to maintain it because, um, he has business contacts that come into town. Instead of having him at his, his home, he has them stay there with, you know, if they're going skiing or whatever, he has a place that he can offer to them. But the adjoining unit was sold to a Cross Fitness place. And Cross Fitness wanted to be open twenty-four-seven, you know, with an access code. And when you drop, you know, a forty-five pound dumbbell, not only could he hear it, you could feel it. And, you know, the, the CCNRs for the project had some pretty specific restrictions in terms of vibration and noise and, and odor and all kinds of things. But we had to get into the posture of enforcing that in order to get control. So there are nuances to what you're proposing that you have to con- to what you're proposing that you have to consider and work through. I think that it could be a viable opportunity in some of the commercial zones. I'm not yet convinced it's a good one in all of them. And I didn't personally have time to, to read through and kind of compare all of the details to see if I was comfortable. So I, I'm, I'm inclined to postpone. I, I wanna do the public hearing, because there may be people here that are inclined to speak on it, but I, I'd like to just make sure I've got my arms around what you're proposing in all of the different zones, and, and be careful about the restrictions that are imposed or so forth. I, I think it can be a good opportunity. I'm not, like I said, I'm not sure we would wanna put this in every one of the commercial zones. I, I wanna review the uses in each of them and think about it, and maybe we even tailor it, even not just to the zoning districts, but to particular uses, and sometimes it may, maybe it should be a conditional use as opposed to a permitted one, so that we can see what reasonably anticipated detrimental effects might arise out of that particular application.
Won't that, won't that review come with the site plan review?
Well, if it was a conditional, if, if it was a conditional use in the zone, then it would require a conditional use permit on top of a site plan review. And, and we have three levels of those, so. So I'm, I'm not wanting to, to say, no, there's no way we can do this. That's not my view of it, but I do, I think we need to be somewhat circumspect in the application and the way that this was applied, and in the districts and zones it applies to.
I agree a hundred percent. I, I think it's a good idea. I think we just need to fine-tune it.
Was this one scheduled for a public hearing?
It is scheduled for a public hearing. Were there any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll look for a motion to move into our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion a second to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing for item number, what is this, H2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now in public hearing. There were no sign-ups for this particular public hearing, but if there's any members of the public that would like to speak, they can definitely come up and do that.
Calvin Judd, member of the public, but also disclosed that I represent Val for real estate transactions here. So I'd just like to speak in support of it. For the past several months, I've watched potential businesses come to this site and have front row seat to kind of what they like about Morgan County, what they don't. This property's already zoned commercial, so we want it to succeed, you know, obviously logically, and I'd say these, this is just another arrow in the quiver for a potential business to say, okay, I can, I can be sustainable here, I can be viable here, because this is one other way I can hedge my bet that, that we've reached the threshold here for a commercial to be successful. I agree with Bobby that some fine tuning needs to be done. I, I think it needs to get it right, and maybe some of that's CCNRs, you know, just anticipating a nuisance and making it a good experience for everybody, but the commercial zoning already has several uses permitted that would allow overnight guests, like a motel or hotel or an RV park, so it's logical to assume some people wanna stay overnight here anyway. Why not let business owners or those related to that business stay on-site? I, you know, similar to a vet, I can, can see an urgent need for an urgent care in Morgan County at the base of Snow Basin. If, if we had a, a nurse that could just stay overnight, we'd have twenty-four, twenty-four-seven urgent care opportunities instead of somebody needing to go through the canyon, which is a risk in itself in the winter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lily Allen, Mountain Green. So I have two concerns. One, I think the purpose of the commission is to build our commercial tax base. However, with the residential dwelling in, in the space, does that bring down the percentage of property tax versus, commercial versus residential? So that'll be my first question. The second is, when I look up the live-work zoning, it does specify the owner of the business needs to reside, and I'm wondering who will be overseeing that, making sure that happens? So, thank you.
Robin Haslam, and I thank you all for your service, having been in your seat. I appreciate your time. I was at the planning commission meeting, and the questions that you guys are bringing up are the similar questions that the planning commission had. You know, how do you regulate it, the issues with people coming and going. You don't have residential areas in any of your other commercial areas. The other thing that, that's concerning me is it doesn't sound like this is the same information that the planning commission was presented, and they voted on. So my, my comment to Member McConnell, if we're gonna revamp what's presented, it needs to go back to the planning commission so that they can look at it, because this is not what they voted on. You know, you got your tax base, as you've mentioned, you know, how you're going to govern residential in part of it, commercial in part of it. He mentioned it's gonna, it's turning, basically gonna turn into a, an Airbnb. They're gonna be renting it to anybody they want. Is that what we want in our commercial areas? We have areas in the county that accommodate those type of things as far as, you know, people being, being able to stay. I don't think the commercial highway is a place for it. I understand that it's, I understand his feelings and the purpose and intent for it. I just don't think the, the commercial areas is where we wanna put this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I, I'm not sure why you don't have the planning commission minutes, 'cause that would, to your discussion, they brought up a lot of these things. And I did speak then, and I did say, I wasn't opposed to it, but I didn't see clear definition, and I didn't, and I would like you to talk more about the terms and, and enforcement. Also, one other point that, that they didn't say, the Rome developer stayed there to listen to the conversation, and you have the town center, and you've worked hard at that, and it's, you've got only the thirty-five percent commercial that you negotiated in the development agreement. They were listening very closely. Can they convert that commercial to residential and get even more residential than they're putting in your town center? And I just thought, maybe not, with Commissioner McConnell's comments, maybe not all of the commercial zones are appropriate for it, especially the commercial zones where you've already put in the multiplex kind of dwelling.
Town center.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
For clarification, the same text that was shown and presented to the planning commission was shown and presented to you?
Yeah, the question in my mind becomes, do we wanna remand it back to the planning commission for further review along the lines that we've discussed, or, or work that out at the county commission level? I mean, I think, I think it's good to have the planning commission's recommendation. They, they voted no. So if we remand it, we will need to remand it with, with specific direction to insert the additional guidance and provisions that we're looking for in order to have their recommendation. And frankly, you know, on some of the items, the staff's recommendation in terms of tune-ups and so forth, so.
Our code gives you the discretion to do that.
Right, and the discretion not to.
Or not to, yeah.
But, I mean, I think there's enough issues that have been raised, you know, and I don't know whether they'll appreciate receiving it again. They, you know, there was a three-two vote to not, you know, as a negative recommendation, but there were some who, on the commission, who were open to the idea. Some of the things that we've heard tonight and have been suggested are on the basis of listening to the planning commission's discussion, and so, I, I mean, I think, my personal view is that we remand it back to have them forward a recommendation that addresses some of these issues. They may still send back a negative recommendation, but, but I would appreciate it if they would at least say, but if you're going to approve it, these are the additional clarifications we would impose. These are the zones that we think that it should be applicable to. I mean, the, the short-term rentals is something easily addressed. I mean, we could prohibit short-term rental, meaning less than thirty days of these units. We could address owner occupancy or just business-related occupancy, meaning tied to the operation of the business. We could look at the specific uses in the various zones and try to make a determination as to whether or not it should be allowed at all, or whether or not it should be allowed as a conditional use or a permitted use, because in some circumstances, we may feel like it would make sense to do. So, those are kind of my thoughts.
And enforcement, who would oversee that?
The same, well.
All code enforcement ultimately, at least land use code enforcement ultimately lies with Josh.
I mean, one of the services that we lack in the county is a code enforcement officer.
If you're offering.
I'm sure you'd love to have a code enforcement officer. Nobody loves that job, but.
I don't.
But, but, and it, and it may be a possibility that, you know, as different things are evolving and developing in the county, that we'll have sufficient revenues to have a code enforcement officer in the next several years. I don't.
I hope so.
Me too.
I hope so.
'Cause it was pretty clear in the comments to the area plan that we charge too much and don't provide sufficient services. There's the comments that were included in there. Maybe a lack of understanding of how those things are connected.
Where the monies go, either. Okay, I, I'm in agreeance with what you've commented.
I am, because if it was done correctly, I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Agree.
So do we have to have a motion for that, or do we just remand it back?
I think we need to make a motion to, to remand it back, if that's the plan.
And in that motion, if you could include the additional or specific considerations for the planning commission, kind of like you listed earlier, just put it as part of the motion, of what you want them to specifically consider and make a recommendation about.
Thank you, Robert.
You guys give me more credit for memory than I actually have. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we remand the proposed amendment to Morgan County Code, modifications of Section eight dash five C3 use regulations, and the proposed addition to Section eight point five, Article M, to the planning commission for recommendations specific to the zoning districts that this should be applied to, whether or not the use should be conditional or permitted in those given zones, a recommendation with respect to short-term rentals, and the possible prohibition of short-term rentals, recommendations addressing. I, I'm interested in, in their recommendation on the tax base comment, and/or at least a determination. Maybe we can ask the assessor whether or not these units would be, I just, as a clarification, ask the assessor to tell us how these would be assessed. I'm assuming commercial on the commercial element and residential on the residential element. I, so that's, that's the motion, I think, in terms of remanding to the planning commission. Were there any other items?
Yeah, you also mentioned owner, owner occupied versus business-related occupied.
Right. I'd like a recommendation on that as well. Thank you.
And what about oversight?
Oversight has to be by our code enforcement officer, which is presently the planning director.
Okay.
I don't know how else we address that. Well, we could have them make a recommendation on whether or not the code requirement includes a requirement that the applicant submit CCNRs that address the conflict between uses, and, and how, how that's going to be addressed, not by the county, but by the association that has this project.
That, that's already required in the tax amendment.
I told you I hadn't had the chance to read it carefully as I wanted, so.
Yeah, so.
Our packet was only a hundred and thirty-one pages this week, so.
That's it?
And that's without the area plan.
So, so yeah, okay, if that's in there, great, we'll look at that. And then, so that's my motion for remand. I would also like to have a review of the Rome Development Agreement, because they have, they already have opportunities for residential and commercial in their project. It is a mixed-use development, and they may be allowed something similar to this by virtue of that town center zoning, but from my perspective, that I, I wouldn't think this should be applicable to them without a modification to their development agreement.
But I think we also ought to just consider removing it as a permitted use in town center zoning altogether, because I think.
It's already addressed.
It's already addressed.
To the extent we wanted to address it.
Exactly. So to me, that's, you just remove it from the town center zoning, and we address the other commercial zones, which you've already got in your motion.
So, somewhat convoluted motion, apologies.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item. H3, application twenty-three point zero zero five, Clay Rich and Matt Slate. This is a rezone and future man, land use map amendment from agriculture to RR5.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, excuse me. Yeah, item number three, application number twenty-three point zero zero five. This is a request to change both the future land use map designation and, of course, to rezone it, from agriculture to rural residential, sorry, okay, I'm sorry. So from agricultural slash rural residential one acre minimum to rural residential five, and rezone property from A20 to RR5 for a parcel of land identified, or located approximately fifteen hundred feet south and west of the Lion Creek and North Morgan Valley Drive intersection in, in Milton, Utah. You'll find included in your staff reports or your packet, the applicant submitted a draft concept plan with this application, the key word there being draft. The concept plan is not required for a rezone. They kind of just wanted to show their intent with the land, and, and we've looked at it intensely as staff as well, looking at the acreage, what's developable, and the easements that are there, and, and how many lots could be there total, that I'm assuming will be part of the discussion tonight. And our office has gotten many publics, many, many comments from the public in the form of visits or emails or phone calls. There were a lot of, there was a, a lot of turnout at the planning commission meeting with Shane Stevens, a member. Stevens, a member representing the built-in area, writing down a lot of the notes. I do have those, maybe like boiled-down comments from the public. I'm happy to put this on your desk, but just to kind of boil them down. You can read those if you like. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements for a rezone. There are no fire or engineer comments. Again, the concept plan being in draft phase, just to kind of show intent of the applicant. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is for denial. Commissioner Wilson, again, absent. And again, this project is for both the future land use map and a rezone, this application. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is, both applicants are in the audience tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I would like to see your summary of the comments.
I would be happy to provide any of those.
All right, additional questions for staff?
Not yet.
It appears to me, I was just looking at the future, or excuse me, at the current zoning map and the lots in this area, we've got RR1 zoning for a portion, and then we have A20 above, but there's actually a number of non-conforming lots here that are in the A20.
Less than...
That are less than an acre, or around an acre. There's a half-acre lot in there, there's a .86 acres, and even in the RR1, there's a number that are, sorry, that are considerably less than an acre, so that's interesting that we've got kind of a mixed bag here.
We've got RR5 just across the road to the northeast and to the southeast, I believe, right there.
Yeah, this RR1, we did Rindlesbach, what was that, about a year ago?
Right.
Well, then it looks like the future land use comes up a little bit further, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
I think there was a jigsaw.
Okay, I lost that point this side out to you.
A jigsaw on the future land use.
That was Mountain Green.
Okay, it's like, wait a minute, that doesn't look right to me.
Think down further.
There you go, right there. So, the future land use map shows it through those current lots, it looks like.
And extends a little bit into the property.
And, yeah, and including this lot.
Correct.
And what, that's RR5?
That's RR1. So, the lighter areas are RR1, the green areas, A20.
The darker brown up here is RR5.
Okay.
We've got some RR1 that extends quite a ways out. They have a direction there, doesn't it?
For the future land use, comes all the way out to Rindles, under lots, where.
Okay, additional questions for staff? All right, shall we hear from the applicant?
What would you like, just a summary?
Sure, yep. Full disclosure, I think most of us watched the Planning Commission meeting, so we heard both the public comment in that meeting, and we heard your summary.
And I've got my own notes, too.
And we've got notes, so.
So, let me just say, I served on the Planning Commission for five years, three as chair. I saw the Cottonwoods, I saw the ridges, I saw Surry Lane, I saw the Rollins Ranch, I saw Whisper Ridge, and up until eight weeks ago, I thought I understood this process. But what I've come to find out is the rezone in Morgan County is like getting, having sore throat. A rezone in Morgan County is like finding I have throat cancer, I mean, rezone in Milton is like finding I have throat cancer. Let me just say, just a couple really quick things. We've got 30 and a half acres. We've submitted a concept plan. We want two lots, one lot for me, one lot for Matt. I initially purchased the property with the intent to do four lots for my kids. I'd like my kids to be able to stay in Morgan someday, if my neighbors and others will accommodate that. I looked at the property and the topography, I made a decision that four lots didn't make sense, the road didn't make sense for four lots. There's a private lane ordinance that restricts the development on that property of at most four lots. To do more than four lots in an RR5 zone, you'd have to build a county standard road 66 feet wide. It's virtually impossible to do a county road on this property. And if you take a look at the private lane, it's virtually impossible. I mean, you could do it maybe if you hired NASA to put four lots up there. Two lots is all we want. We've asked them for a five-acre rezone. First of all, I think a five-acre rezone is the appropriate zone for this property. But we asked for a five-acre rezone instead of 10-acre rezone, because the setbacks and front requirements in the A20 and the R10 zones are the same. You have to go to the RR5 to get a more accommodating setback or frontage. So, we could do a development on a 10-acre rezone, it would look like we forced, it wouldn't work as well. The five-acre rezone is the most accommodating rezone for what we intend to try and accomplish. Some of the things that we've discussed, and I'm just about done, is the decision tonight is really, it's two homes versus one home. If we don't get a rezone, we're not sure, we haven't discussed what we would do, but we could still, the road will still exist, there'll still be one septic system, there'll still be one well, so the decision tonight's one home versus two homes. A couple of things we can do, and let me just say really quick, the public comment, we listened to the public comment, we heard everything that's been summarized there by staff. We've done, we've made some adjustments to try and accommodate some of those public comments. Right now, if you take a look at the future land use map, you'll notice that, well, you're not looking at the future land, the future land use map has some flaws in it. For example, the future land use map puts the last home on the lane in an A20 and an RR1 zone, so even the future land use map didn't take care of split zoning issues. We think, we think what we're asking for is in harmony with the general plan. We think what we're asking for is reasonable accommodation. And there's just two or three things that we've decided to do in, as a result, and in response to some of the public comment. First thing is, it's our intention to provide recorded easements to the two homes on the end of the lane that currently have prescriptive easements. That's something we intend to do. The other thing we intend to do is to use some of the property we've purchased to make some turnaround accommodations on the lane. Some of the public comment had to do with the safety of the road, had to do with people turning around, it had to do with all that type of stuff. So, one of the accommodations is to take some of the property, enough of the property, to make a turnaround accommodation at the end of Line Creek Road on the property we have. So, we think we're making...
Are you talking near the existing gate?
What's that?
You're talking near the existing gate?
No, 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 not the existing gate.
Or up the other way?
No, down.
Let me just put it this way, I'm an accountant, Matt owns a plumbing company. What we would do with that would be to work with staff and those residents and our engineer to come up with what makes the most sense. So, you've seen a concept plan. Concept plan is just intentions, it's not intended to be exactly where it was set. But we would do that to staff satisfaction, and we would do that working with both those neighbors on the end of the lane. And then, like I said, we use an engineer, because I can draw it, but I can't do it right. Maybe Matt can, but I can't, so.
So, the two residences that you indicated you'd grant the recorded easement to, so we have this proposed rezone map, and it has Van Blom and Daniel Lloyd Oliver, is that the two that you're talking about?
Danny Oliver, he just sold his house to his son, Tony Sorensen.
Okay.
And Caleb Van Blom, Caleb's here. So, the other thing is, we can work with staff and a few things to make some improvements, to widen the road, make, you know, make a few improvements and stuff like that. So, we think what we're suggesting is, not only in our best interest, we think it's in the best interest of the people of Milton, particularly Line Creek. There's not going to be a turnaround of the land without our participation, unless they condemn a home or something. What else, Matt?
I think you got it.
Would it help if I cried?
Probably not, but.
Anyway, we've tried to listen. The other, the last thing is, in the last, in the Planning Mission public hearing, there were some questions concerned about easements, and I can see why people would be disturbed about this. It's interesting how these stories start and how big they get, and how far from accurate they get by the time they're done. But nothing we're doing will be anywhere near the existing road with a prescriptive easement for all the ag and recreation, and my guesses are 30 or 40 people above us that have prescriptive easements to use our property. And let me just, for those who are concerned about it, I've had that 80 acres there for the last eight to 10 years. I've made a lot of accommodations on the road, including moving gates and things like that at my own expense to solve some of the issues and stuff like that. I have absolutely no intention of doing anything that would be, that would be, would cause anybody any easement issues or problems, except for maybe cleaning the end of the road up, and, so, I said I'd be sure, that's probably a little bit late for that. You have any questions?
Clay, I've got a question on that irrigation pipeline, and I know, I don't know how long it's existed there, but I guess, I don't know if there's an existing easement currently that's with the plat that exists.
If you look at, if you look at the property, here's the end of the Kennedy Road. The pipeline comes through the property right through here, comes up through this saddle a little bit wider, you can see kind of the pipeline right there, goes through this direction. So, it's got an easement for the road, it's got an easement for the pipeline. If you look at this property, the slopes prevent you from doing anything here, 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 and the easements and slopes prevent you from doing anything here. So, this spot right in here is where the building that was reset, and that's one of the other... That's one of the other reasons for the RR5 is because the setbacks lets us set back further from the slopes. It lets us do a little bit more to maybe preserve for the Line Creek neighbors, their view shed and the privacy of their backyards and stuff like that. So, that's another primary reason, the setbacks, we want to put the homes further back from the slopes where they'd be outside, or at least further outside. Is that...
Well, sorry, just so there is an existing easement on that secondary line, so it's, so they're protected.
I don't think there's a written easement that's prescriptive, like any other irrigation easement, I would assume. And I don't know what the law provides for an irrigation easement, my guess is 15 feet or 20 feet or something.
16 feet.
I don't know.
Yep.
Need a good attorney for that.
Did you say you're going to share a well and a septic system?
No, we had individual wells and septics.
Okay.
But let me just, let me just say this, when I, before I bought the property, I did my due diligence. I checked with Rocky Mountain Power Dominion, I checked with, we've got water, we've got, we could get well surfer four if we wanted for water sewer. The only thing we haven't done is the requirements for a subdivision, because this is the subdivision request for subdivision. It just is our intention to reflect enough information that our neighbors, that the Planning Commission, County Commission can understand our intentions, and our neighbors can understand our intentions during the rezone process. But I've already checked, and there's well sewer for everything. If you take a look at the road that would come in, we can do a road at about 8% grade. I think the code allows up to 12, so our roads and stuff like that would be at eight instead of 12.
And now you're talking about the proposed private lane?
The proposed private lane, yeah.
Okay, any additional questions? Thank you. Okay, we'll look for a motion to move into public hearing, and we do have four individuals that have signed up to speak, so we'll go to that point. So moved.
Second.
Give a motion, a second to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing for item H3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in public hearing. We're going to call the four individuals. Tina Kelly.
I think Jeremy addressed my concern with the handout that he could do, if I don't need to be.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Michelle Tubbs.
Hello, I'm, I'm not going to talk in any fancy lingo, I'm just going to talk as a, I grew up on that road, my mom still lives on that road. I don't understand why, I don't know, it just is, I live in West Jordan, and I've seen what has happened, if anybody's been down to the west side of Salt Lake Valley, you can see what has happened from West Jordan down to Provo. I mean, it just, it starts little, it starts as a, it's like a snowball, it starts out little, and then it just keeps going and going and going, and I feel that that's what's going to happen with this. I mean, I understand that, you know, Clay and Matt want to put homes up there, but is that, where's it going to stop? Is it going to stop there, or is it going to just keep going and going and going? That's my concern. I don't live down there, I don't live there, my mom lives there, but I, you know, in the, sometime in the near future, I'm, either me or my grand, either me or my children are going to live there. So, I hope you take into consideration, you know, just, you know, even if you do approve it, what's going to happen in the future to our road. Thank you.
Sharon Williams. Is Sharon here?
Sharon.
Oh, Sharon, I apologize.
I can't believe I am up here, because I did not plan this. So, what I would like to do is read what my grandson, who eventually, after I am gone, and my daughter's gone, he says, "Good morning, this is Drew Tubbs. I am the grandson of Conrad and Sharon Nelson. We have lived up at 2360 Line Creek Road and may do so in the future as well. We are opposed to the multi-house development on Line Creek." And he goes, he says, "Of course, if the owner were to build one house, that wouldn't affect the integrity of Line Creek." I don't know if I agree with that, I may have to talk to him about that. However, multiple houses will lead to more houses. That will affect the integrity of the road and the community. The current infrastructure is unable to handle a big development, and there is not enough space to even widen the road. Please consider all the other communities along the Wasatch Front, who have put the horse before the cart, which has led to safety issues with the roads, along with traffic and infrastructure problems. While cities and counties were, are unable to maintain the roads, the developers pushed through city council, who were swayed by them. I just hope you do not consider this. The Planning Commission said no, and I think we should listen to the Planning Commission. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it. I've never sat the whole time at one of these. That is an experience. So, thank you very much.
We'll welcome you back anytime.
Eric Jensen. Eric Jensen.
Hello, Eric Jensen. I'm a resident of Line Creek. And I'm glad you said that you'd watched the video. So you guys already heard what, most of what I had to say the last time. But this is completely against my grain anyway, because I'm a firm believer of property owner rights. So the Rinless Park one, the Crowther one, I don't, I didn't show up to those because they don't affect me. But this one, the road, does, it will not handle heavy equipment, construction equipment. And from what Brett Heiner said, Line Creek's been a number one for ten or fifteen years and still hasn't been replaced. You know, I've got, I've got some pictures here that show condition of the road. I mean, it's, it's fragmented like a jigsaw puzzle with four to six inch pieces that just fall apart. My neighbor, Gary Nelson, is in his mid eighties, and just, just before the last snowstorm, Morgan County came and packed some of the puzzles. A week later, I watched Gary carrying this piece of asphalt, this figure around, this shape like a Hershey Kiss that the snowplow had popped out of the pothole and put right in front of his house. He's carrying it down the road to put it on the, to the bank of the creek, to get it out of the road. So without improvements, I'm glad to hear about a turnaround, but without improvements to the road, I don't think any additional construction that requires that type of heavy equipment on this road should be approved. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you. Okay, those are the individuals that signed up. I think there's probably a couple other folks who looks like would like to speak. So if you'd like to come up and address the commission, you're welcome to do that.
I'm Cliff Blonquist. I, we own the property just west of the Milton church to Line Creek. And I know this map, this doesn't, doesn't do this land justice because there are no contour lines on this. This is not a flat piece of land. And my issue here is, I hope you all take a look at this before you, here's a good year, this year to remind us where we shouldn't be building. I've had, I've had your, we've got sandbags and we're looking at homes sliding off mountains. This is not flat ground. So before you make a recommendation to move forward, I hope you take a hard look at this piece of land. And I thank you for your time. I know it's tough decisions, but sometimes you have to say no. I know developers mean well, and they say they intend to do things. This is, this is one you need to hold your feet to the fire if you approve it. Thank you.
Vaughn Nickerson from Milton. I just recently was on the most current Milton area planning commission. I was with Clay, talking about what the people of Milton want in our area. And I think Shane, I think he represented pretty good at the, at the planning commission meeting. We have just compiled all from the survey that was sent out. The recommendation to the people of Milton is to maintain the current zoning as it is, where the RR5 is at this point, where the RR1 is at this point, and the A20 where it presently resides. I have nothing personally against either one of them, but I believe that the people of Milton have spoken of what they want to maintain in our area. And I just would ask that you follow that same recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I speak in the public comment too?
Sure.
Just wanted to, I live in the, one of the houses across the street.
Will you state your name for the?
Caleb Van Blum. So speaking with Dan Oliver, who's also right across the street from this, you know, we've, and, and his son Tony just bought the place. Neither of us are superimposed to two houses. Both of us kind of have some concerns with what the zoning entitlement will allow. I understand there's a lot of, based on the contour, slope, all that stuff, maybe probably you can't get six houses in there, probably almost definitely. But our concern is what the entitlement's to. If it was an RR10, I wouldn't even be here and probably even be okay, maybe speak in support of it, just because I'm concerned about entitlement in the future. I'm pretty confident that these two gentlemen are going to do two houses, and that's their intention. But if they both get hit by a bus on the way to build the places, what can the person do after that? And that's, that's my concern. So, but again, nothing against these guys, wouldn't mind them as neighbors, but that's my concern is the entitlement. So, because I certainly don't want a six house development there, or condos or anything like that. So, and a lot of stuff comes up about the, well, what about these non-conforming lots? They're grandfathered in from decades ago. I don't know what happened then, but I, I don't, I don't like when people bring that up as some sort of justification when it's ancient history. So, thanks.
Thank you.
You can either speak during the public comment, or we can.
We'll allow you to address after if you don't want to do it during the public comment.
Yeah, that's fine. Can hear it all.
So Roland Haslam again.
The only reason I'm up here is because I'm in the, I got in the same boat. But you remember, the question on the table is, does this meet our future land use map? Does it meet our zoning? Talk about the subdivisions, roads is not part of the application right now. The question is, does it work with the area plans? The only RR5 in Milton is north of Line Creek, or a lot north of Stoddard Lane. The rest of it is RR1. The Mayland Johnsons is all RR1. But that's a question the, the commission is, do we want to change our future land use map or not? Thanks.
Todd Crowther. I'm a adjacent landowner. I realize you have these different zonings for a reason. But if you approve for one person, you're going to have others in the area ask for the same thing. And that's not what any of us really want, is to have five acre lots or a bunch of homes on my place or any other place around the area. But they are right adjacent to mine. I have similar problems if I want to develop with hillside and issues like that. But the existing plan is for twenty, and I think it was there for a reason, to control that growth in that area, so we don't have some big impact of a development going on that we, that gets out of control. From his place to my place, and I know that will restrict me too, but I'm okay with this being fair amongst neighbors. Down the road, they did a development, I think Brent Anderson did his. He was held to twenty acre lots. I believe he wanted to do less than that. But it's in a similar area. It doesn't have Line Creek Road going up there, but he created his own road, held them to twenty, and actually looks good, but I'm sure his neighbors were thinking, five acres, this is out of control. We don't need that. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no additional public comment. Look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're back in public meeting. I believe the applicant wanted to address us. We'll let you go ahead and do that.
I just wanted to say one thing, and that's that Matt and I appreciate the public comment, and the people who have the courage to stand up here and speak, or to put their name on the letters and that type of stuff, because I, I like all these guys. They're good people. And there's a whole bunch of people that had a whole lot to say, but didn't have the courage to put their names up or to stand up. This is really difficult to stand here. And I just, just want them to know that whether I think they're right or wrong doesn't make any difference. I appreciate the fact. I think it's a matter of character. And I think that the people who have said something today should be recognized for having the character to stand up and say something, whether they're right or wrong. I disagree with them. But I, I just wanted to make sure that those people who stood up know that Matt and I appreciate the fact they put their names on what they had to say.
Hey Clay, before you leave.
You've got some questions for the applicant?
I have some questions, questions for you, Clay.
What?
I have some questions for you. I mean, we're not done yet.
You have questions for me or Nicole?
Well, either one. In RR10, I looked up the setbacks, and there's a difference of thirty feet. Okay, from the rear, on the front, same. What would cause us not, I mean, why would it? Because I've seen the property, sixty feet from where I saw the fence line you're trying to come in, you're more than sixty feet.
There's room, but thirty feet's still thirty feet.
So why do we have to go, why should we go to a five? I mean, give, give everybody, I mean, you've explained it to me, but I want to hear it again. Because when I was looking at those zoning rules, there's only ten feet difference in some of them, and thirty feet in another, and fifteen in another.
You know, I don't, I can't, Matt, Matt should probably speak to this, but like I said, the setbacks in the five, they're different.
Right.
And the frontage is different. And the flexibility in our roads and where we set our lots is different.
Right.
We think the five acre zone's not only appropriate zone, but it's the most appropriate zone for what we want to accomplish. But, you know, I don't know if you have the authority to do a ten acre rezon. If we had to settle for a ten, we'd settle for a ten. We don't have many nefarious ideas, or, we're not being sinister about this. When we say two lots, we're looking for two lots. But if, if we'd had to settle for a ten, we'd settle for ten. We're, we're not looking for a five acre because we want to pull some slick trick on somebody.
Well, as I, as I was looking at it, if you're looking at a five acre lot, and you put your homes where you've explained where they would be going, in reality, you have to put a pretty big, I mean, I don't think it's feasible for you to go more homes. With the road and everything going back behind there, back behind Matt's, to have him put one in for his son, or whoever, daughter, or his wife, and outbuilding. I mean, especially if you put an outbuilding in there. If you put an outbuilding out there, and you try to put in a twenty-four foot, or a twelve foot, or sixteen foot, I don't see how you could even, even if it's an RR5, you can't put more. Not where you're going to place the home. So I'm just.
I listened to Mr. Blonquist comments. You know, he's seen the property, probably, him and Kell Joy probably spent some time sparking up there when they were young. But
In that barn.
But if you go up there and you look at the property, there's probably five or six acres maybe that you could build on, so to accommodate. I went up there and checked the property. We've done some engineering on the property already. So we've hired mountain engineering. They've done work on this. So when we make representations of concept, they're not, they're informed representations about concept. One of the reasons for the five acre rezon is, is we've got two lots, okay? And the way we've decided to do this is a little less than eighteen acres for Matt, a little less than twelve and a half for me. One of the reasons why we started out with a five acre rezon as well is in the future, if we had to deal with either the Olivers or Van Blooms or the county, the smaller lots are the one I'm going to keep, and I wanted to have some flexibility to work with the county, even if it come to dedicating property to the county, or even to do other property issues with those two people. It's unlikely, so I'm not saying that's probable. But it was also one of the considerations.
So was your concern that if you did that, it would drop lot two to below the ten acre minimum?
Well, not, if, if I did something with two and a half acres with the county or something like that, it would do that. And like I said, I'm not even suggesting that's probable, because if you guys try to do it, you're going to get lots pushed back in public comment.
But you don't really have the room going in there because of, because of that pipeline that goes there. You can only put them in those places up on top, and they're flat.
The only place you can put homes is on top and, and on that setback far enough off of that. But we'd still, once again, we'd like to go far enough back off that slope and off that bench to be out of sight. And so when you ask about setbacks between the fives, tens, and between the tens and the twenties and fives, thirty feet may not seem like a lot, but it can be a lot.
So Josh, so you want, sorry.
Josh had a comment.
It's more than a ten foot or a thirty foot setback threshold. So the rear yard setback is about a ten feet difference. It drops from sixty to fifty. But the side yards drop from sixty feet to twenty. So A20 and RR10 both require sixty foot side yards on both sides. So you're looking at an eighty feet difference between RR10 and RR5.
And once again, we could make a ten acre work. But the five acre gives the flexibility. We think a five acre rezon's the appropriate rezon for the property anyway. And, and whether we put six homes, five homes, or two homes, that shouldn't have any bearing on the decision to rezon. It should be a land use issue. It should be whether this is an appropriate place for a five acre rezon. And so, and the county has a pattern, a habit of doing, in the county, in multiple places, the same thing we're asking you to do today for us. And I don't think, one of the frustrations I had when I sat on the planning commission with the area plan committees, is all the area plan committees feel as if they're general plan committees. And there's some obligation with area plan committees to do, to stay somewhat in conformity with the general plan. And so I would like to suggest that, you know, maybe, I love area plan committees and stuff like that, but they don't have as much latitude. They should kind of stay at home as well with the general plan. And like I said, if you look at, if you look at the last, you don't have to go back very far. You'll find multiple places where future land use maps for A20 are ignored to accommodate five acres and ten acres, one acre rezones in the county, because that's the best land use decision.
You don't have to go back very far. We did one tonight.
Yeah, we did one tonight.
That's right. With the planning commission's recommendation. That's what's interesting.
To me, it's very similar in nature.
Any other questions? Or you want me to sit down?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any additional questions for staff?
I guess for me, I mean, I'm going to kind of go back to Commissioner McConnell's point. And, and this is what I saw when I watched the planning commission also, is I saw a lot of opinions on, on one ask, what the future land use map, exactly what Roland said, future land use map. And one ask was A20 to A5, or to RR5, and there was a lot of pushback. The very next item on the agenda was the same ask, as far as future land use map is concerned, the exact same ask, which went from A20 to RR5, and there was zero concerns, and they pushed forward. Now, I understand that it's in a different location. I understand that maybe the road, or the irrigation line, or the water line, or the condition of the road is different. So I'm not, I'm not discounting that. I guess, I don't want the feeling that when people watch this, similar to when I watched it, that we're just, we're just shooting all over. And, and we don't, you know, whatever we decide here is going to be completely different from here versus a little bit consistency. But I don't know what your thoughts are on that, or maybe even, do we have a thought process eventually of saying, if there's RR1 tunnel zoning, do we have a process where we can say, okay, next step would be RR5 outside of that tunnel zoning, then RR10, and then A20? So I just, it actually doesn't make sense to me a whole lot to have the tunnel zoning, just A20 right in back of it, unless you're a farmer and you have agriculture and that. But anyways, I'm, I don't want to go on and on.
I would agree with you. It's important to note that the general plan and the area plans that are attached as an appendices and not part of the body of the general plan are discretionary. There are other elements that you look at when you're approving or recommending approval to a general plan change, a future land use map change, and that's adjacency. You would look at lot sizes adjacent to the proposed rezoning, or the proposed change. Typical planning is you create buffers between different zones. So an RR1 would have, should have a buffer of an RR5 next to it, and then an RR10, and then an A20. That's currently not what's shown on our future land use map. But there is the buffering aspect of planning. It, it's more noticeable in commercial versus multifamily versus single family areas. It's more noticeable in commercial versus multifamily versus single family areas, you can see it more there. Our recommendation, staff's recommendation is still the same. Adjacent lots are two acres or less. There's a couple of large lots that are close by, but for the most part, 5 acre lots, even if they were to put six 5 acre lots there, those are larger than the majority of the adjacent lots. So, we feel it fits in with the area, and so that's why staff recommended approval. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So, I guess I just, I just have a couple of comments. I was reading these. For some reason, I could only download 56 minutes of the meeting, so I didn't get to hear what?
It was almost three hours.
Yeah, it was. Well, I guess I lucked out. I just, I'm just reading to, this is, this is kind of how I felt when I moved to Morgan. Milton residents just want to leave Line Creek as it is. Sewer might drain down into other properties. Milton residents purchased land thinking it was going to change. They don't want to see it change any further now that they've moved there. So, about three years ago, I woke up one morning, went to drive out of my driveway, and there was a sign right across the road from my house that said, "For sale, 18 acres." And I went, crud. I'm going to have a neighbor right across the street from me. I lived, I moved to Morgan to be in a rural area, I didn't, so I had two choices. I could either live with a neighbor and hope it was a good neighbor, or I could buy the property. And I guess, there's enough of you here tonight, if all the Milton residents don't want it, you could probably all get together, and I'll bet you, you could make them an offer, and they'd sell the land and move somewhere where they want them. Because I don't know, I, I feel like we always want to stop, we want to move to Morgan, and we want to stop everybody else from moving to Morgan. And so, that's, that's my frustration with this, is that we, we, these are, these are two great guys in our community. They keep nice yards, they have nice places, they, they are respectable people, they contribute to our community, and we're treating them like they're guys. We don't want them around here. And I just, I just think that's kind of sad, because as a, as a community, I think we should try and help each other. And we do have, we do have rights to use our land. We have rights to use our land. And these old, non-conforming lots are, are issues with that exact thing. Back in the day, neighbors invited neighbors to move right next door to them. Now, we just try and push them out. It's just the craziest thing to me.
So, can I go again? I actually appreciate Mr. Blomquist, Eric Jensen, I appreciate the concern of the road. Eric, I appreciate you bringing pictures. We had a discussion, and I think you were listening pretty intently, of how Brett evaluates roads. As far as I'm concerned, soon as I can get ahold of Brett tomorrow, I'm going to tell him to move Line Creek to 1. It needs to be at the top, and we need to address it. And because we have one lot, or two lots going in up the road, that, that shouldn't be of concern as much as, what kind of condition is it right now? And we've got to, we've got to get that road to a standard, to where it can handle some traffic. I appreciate the fact that we want, we're looking at a turnaround at that location. That is extremely helpful in any, at any dead end road. So, for a property owner to come in and say, hey, we're willing to help out with a turnaround, I think, I think is great. I agree a little bit with what Commissioner Wilson was saying. I can go, I actually spent a few hours, so this was my Saturday. I spent three hours listening to the meeting, and then I spent about another two to three hours looking at different properties in Milton, and the exceptions that have happened over time. And I don't want to continue to make exceptions. If we're going to, if we're going to have one location and say, hey, we want, we're okay with changing this from A20 to RR5, we need to be okay at the other one. Maybe there's conditions, maybe there's standards and rules, but, you know, when we have, I can, I can give any definition you want. When we have frontage, there was a lot a few years back that was accepted that was, I think, 150 feet. And it should be 200, maybe it was 180, should be 200. It was, there was conditions on it, and it was approved to move forward. I'm sure, I don't even know whose property it is, Baylen Johnson, but the properties in that area, I'm sure at one time they were all A20. And my guess is when he came in and said, hey, let's look at, or however that happened, where they're now RR1, I don't know why there wasn't, I'm guessing there was uproar then, I hope. That's, that's a heck of a lot more impactful than what we're seeing tonight. There's RR5 just across the street and back up in, that I'm sure residents came in and weren't all, all the way approving. I just, I agree with property rights. I don't see this project as being crazy. I mean, they can, they can put in one lot right now, so they're asking for two. I just, I'm trying to understand with the, with how it's been presented, I guess I'm trying to see how the, what's, whatever the opposite of benefit is, the detriment. I'm really trying to figure out what the detriment is to have one more lot versus the two. I know it's a small road, but here you, not just a small, where the bridge is, up past, those photos you're showing up by Oliver's, I mean, there's, there's pothole after pothole. That, that road needs to be fixed. And we'll plan on doing that also. But those are my thoughts.
Can I say one more thing?
No, sorry, we're done with the public hearing.
Thank you, though.
Okay, but we have one car stuck in the middle of that.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to please stop.
You can't fire EMS up that road. One car shuts down everything.
Yeah, and there's an option for that. I mean, we could do an improvement district, and we could come in and try to finance the taking of the property along the fronts of your properties, and increase the road width, and put in the road, and, and put in the curb gutter and sidewalk, and then you would pay for the cost of it over time.
And I know we shouldn't be going back and forth, because public comment period is over. How many, how many roads have you guys driven up the past two months? I know for me, I mean, my parents live up Deep Creek. If you, you want to talk about width concerns and issues, go up Deep Creek, especially when the snow was there. There was not room. If you, if somebody was coming down with a trailer, you were lucky if you could get over. So, I'm not, not, I'm not disagreeing that point at all. There's a lot of, there's a lot of narrow roads in the County.
And a lot of roads with issues, so one caveat I'll add to yours is, we'll address the road condition, but it may not happen this year. We'll have to see what we have financially to make it happen.
Still love to put it up on the list.
But we'll put it on the list.
Yeah.
We'll get it on the list, absolutely. And again, if you want to see a road, take a drive to Croydon.
Yeah, that's right.
Right now, on the Detour Road. I, I think I, I'm in agreeance with, with what's been said thus far. I, I spent six years on the Planning Commission before my almost three years here. And, you know, I firmly believe in property rights as well. But property rights go two ways. A lot of people like to talk about how they believe in property rights when it benefits them, but not when it benefits somebody else. I think everybody should have some right to their property. And in some of the education that I received as a member of the Planning Commission, I attended some, some education events the state put on. And one of the, the things they talked about was, was just good planning in general. And good planning for a community typically includes buffers between different types of zoning. The fact of the matter is, A20 is actually a very intense zoning. A10, A20 agriculture is intense. People don't realize it, but if you live next to a hayfield, you know that you put up hay in the middle of the night. It's loud, it's noisy. If you live next to a mink farm, you know it's stinky. If you live next to a gravel pit, which is also an A20, you know that it's dusty. A20 is actually a very high intensity usage district. And so typically, what they would recommend, if you went to, to school to become a planner like Josh, they would tell you, number one, tunnel zoning is really not a great idea, and that's what we call it here in the County.
Never seen it before.
It's, it's, it's actually a terrible idea, but that's what we have, and that's what we deal with. And number two, they would tell you that you should plan to centralize and then work out with less, well, your less intense out to your more intense, right? So, you would move, in theory, from RR1 to RR5, and then to RR10, and then to A20, and then to MU160. And, and that would be a sound zoning principle. And so, you know, when I, when I look at this, I, I think that it's a sound zoning principle to move to an RR5 or an RR10, and not just straight from, from RR1 to A20. Furthermore, we just did a rezone of almost the exact same situation in, in my neighborhood, in Croydon. Not a soul wrote us, or called us, or complained about it. Nobody showed up for the public comment. And, and we've got issues on our roads too. So, a lot of the issues that were brought up, I think, relate. And I do appreciate, you know, the things that have been noted. Somebody mentioned landslides and the property. That will be addressed, so they'll have to potentially, we'll look at what the ground there is, and then they'll have to decide if, if it's necessary to do geotech or not. That'll be part of the next step. There's a lot of steps to this process, and I think that's also not well understood. You know, even if a rezoning is passed today, they're still going to have probably six months to a year of process ahead of them, which would include subdivision, which is six to nine months, building permit, that's another section. There's a lot of process that'll be involved here. So, whatever happens tonight, that's not the end of, of the discussion or the planning on this project. And then there were some comments about this being a large subdivision, which by definition, our code says that 10, 10 lots or less are a small subdivision, so this is a, definitely a small subdivision. Dividing a parcel, even if, and if you could divide it into five separate lots or, or so, it would still be considered a small subdivision. So, just for clarification, I think that's all I have to comment.
I don't have any additional comments with respect to the merits of the application. I will say, with respect to the Planning Commission, I think we do need to, to make it clear for them that an indefinite, I can't remember the exact word.
Postpone indefinitely.
Indefinite postponement of an application is, is not an appropriate action. They can recommend it, they can recommend denial, or they can recommend approval, they can disagree with the decisions that we make. I'm sure they do frequently, because occasionally we disagree with them, and, you know, they can, you know, hold us in derision, or whatever they want to do with respect to it, but they need to send the applications forward. That's just part of the, the process. And ultimately, even under LUDMA, an applicant has the ability to send a notice to the County and says, you've had it this long, I need a positive or a negative recommendation. They can't do that, so I, I don't know exactly what the motivations for that was, and the motion didn't survive, so that's good. But I think there's some new members on the Commission, and I know occasionally they do the training, where they have the real property ombudsman come in and do some training. With the new members there, that might be good and advisable, but I just wanted to make that as a, a point of clarification for the benefit of the County generally.
Do you have any comments?
I just want to kind of reiterate, I think every one of you basically said my thoughts. As far as the Van Blooms, and the Oliver's, it will be nice for you to have a real lot, instead of being in a non-conforming lot. It's nice to have that, and with what they're proposing to do, is to basically give up some of their land to be able to do that, I think that's a nice present. Because they could also put up a gate just before your properties, because it's on their property, other than its per script easement. So, and there are people that go up that road. I saw a horseman going up there. His family, Clay's family, that has both sides of the road. And if they want to, I guess they could go to court to get it all shut off to a point, except for those few people that are up there further, that own land, and they're the only ones that could go up there. I think in our County, and I've noticed this a lot, is that just because we've done it forever, doesn't mean it's right. You're still trespassing. I see that all over this County. Not just this County, but other counties too. We used to, when we were little, used to go all over. I can't do that anymore. Not because of my big size and everything else, health and abilities, but we can't go and do those things we used to, because people have moved in, some are still here, and they have not exercised their rights to keep you off of the property. Some they have, unfortunately. So, I am just, I'm just saying that, you know, there's some, there was not enough definitiveness in the Commission report, the Planning Commission, to make me go against, or to go with their recommendation. And I hate to say this to everybody, but if you didn't, like Matt said, if you did not want this project, you should have bought the land. That's the way I'm starting to feel about this whole County. The whole County. If you don't want a project, come up with some cotton picking money to buy it. And I'll do that the rest of my days here, is if you want to, if you don't want a development, and you don't want to go through the process, and you guys have gone through that process, but I really think that you, you need to really look at, what are you willing to give up to keep what you've got? If you don't want development, then buy the cotton picking land. And I shouldn't be saying cotton picking, because my daughter says I shouldn't.
That's not a comment, the stupidest I've ever heard.
Well, I don't care. But this is the problem, is you guys can do what you want, but I'm just saying, if you're, put your wallets where your mouth is.
All right, let's call this back to order.
I'm sorry, I'm still-
No point of information?
No, we're done, we're done.
Where is the venue to, I mean, I don't like a condescending tone. Where is the venue?
You know, I can tell you, condescending, and you know what? We can talk about it later. But in this, I really think that you need to be able to really understand this by sitting in my shoes and walking in them. Because I have had people, even this morning, that says, we want this, or we don't want this. And I says, okay, what are you willing to give up? So, in other words, you have to think of that. And now, your time's over, but you know, unless he wants to grant it to you.
Okay. We're going to come back to order here. We've heard the public comment, we've had our comments, we'll look for a motion on item H3.
If I can read it off of here, I'll do it. I move we approve the Rich Rezone Map Amendment, application number 23.005, changing 30.49 acres from A20 slash RR- zero five, changing thirty point five, four nine acres from A twenty slash RR one to RR five, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated May second, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, we are to the commissioner comments section. Commissioner Anderson.
I just started with me last time, but I've got my notes, so hold on.
She didn't change the order this time.
No, we're good, we're good. I actually took notes.
Okay, if you'd like to speak, please step out. Otherwise, please, please be quiet while you're in the room. Thank you. Yeah, let's turn the lights on. Thank you.
Okay. Still hearing a lot of noise out here. I don't know how much.
If you want to speak, please leave the room. If, if you'd like to listen to the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay here, but one of my responsibilities is to keep order in this room and that's what we're gonna do, okay?
Okay, I've got three items. The first one would be concerning grants. And I just, I want to reiterate, I, I wrote an email about this, I want to say about a month ago, Blaine, and I, I know you're kind of pushing really hard on a lot of these grants and a grant writer and a grant manager, and I agree. Um, I just want to make sure that we have the projects, and we've talked about it, I think I've talked about it with Commissioner Newton a little bit too, but, but that we have projects that we get the grants for, right? And, and we did mention this, I'm just saying it publicly, but, because there are, there are hundreds, hundreds of grants out there we can go after. So I think the thought process that we're kind of been discussing is what projects are priority for us. And then when we have that priority in that list, then, then going after the grants that pertain, um, to that project. And I think the Fairgrounds Park is kind of showing that to us right now, to a degree, where, um, we had to get that, that fund application submitted without fully addressing and commenting on that park. So I'm, I'm glad we got it submitted, but I think we've got a year ahead of us where we've really got to understand and figure out what's gonna be happening at that park and, and how we're gonna address each of those items. So that's, um, well, that took my second item, third item. So, um, recreation, and, and I want to make sure that, I told Lydia, she's got to be a little bit more, um, open with us, continue to be open with the commissioners, but as I was talking to her about the.
Will you not close that door?
What's that?
Can we close that door? There's too much noise.
We could, we had to leave at least one open.
So, do you want me, I can speak later, Blaine.
No, that's fine, because I'm quieter. They moved out of the way, so.
So recreation, junior jazz, our junior jazz, um, up here in, just in the Morgan area, the signups that we had for junior jazz, so percentage versus population, the highest in the state. Um, we received an award for that. Um, I think Lydia has a signed basketball, if you want to go see that. But I think that tells us something as far as, um, residents are concerned, is that there's a lot of interest in recreational sports up here. And I think we're gonna find that in other sports too, not just junior jazz, but, um, what a great accomplishment actually, to have, have something like that and have that much interest up here. So I think the interest is gonna continue to grow and we got to make sure we're accommodating correctly. One of the main things I know we've all discussed about that would be, um, fields, because we're currently paying for fields. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any comments that can't be made via email. I'm gonna try to keep it short because we've still got a closed session to do. Commissioner McConnell.
Just real quick, um, I had a, um, resident of Mountain Green call me about the chipper days, which is something that we've done relatively frequently over about the last five or six years. He was concerned that he had missed the deadline. The deadline, I don't know where he found it, on the website, I couldn't find it. We need a better search mechanism on our website, but, uh, just. Even something that just says "search" would help, you know? So, anyway, we, we need to have a search mechanism.
Found a YouTube video of longer than fifty-six minutes.
But, but anyway, I, I checked with Chief Brendel and, because it was done through the fire district, it was done with grant funds, they've essentially run out of them, that grant has run out. They're trying to maybe pull together some other things to do, it might be more limited, it might be primarily limited to the Highlands because that's where I think they generate the most branches and tree stuff, and, but it would probably be limited and later in the season. Nobody's missed a deadline. We're not sure what the abbreviated or reduced program to be. Oh, and the YCC did get the nonprofit corporation of the year.
That's awesome.
And they've just done the groundbreaking on their new project, so.
Commissioner Fackrell.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, for those of you who are going to do this, the chamber is doing their golf tournament on June third. We'd like to have.
Says June second.
Oh, sorry.
Just since you were showing it to me while you were saying.
It's also prices instead of prizes. I want to correct that.
It's not mine.
Second and third prices instead of.
I'll tell her that, okay?
She wants to be a new one then?
Well, no, they'll probably not change it, so.
So June second.
June second, so I hope somebody will, you know, put together a team.
I don't golf. I'll plan on it, I just need to make sure it's the second.
It is, it's the Friday, before the third. Because the third is another item. Okay, so those of you that could sponsor a team, it would be great, if you can, to get a team together. Also, the COAG, remember, um, they would like to meet with as many of us as we can on the tw- I better get the date.
The fifteenth is what you said, right?
Okay, it's the fifteenth, you're right.
Did it change? I'm gonna be out of town, so I can't do that one.
Is that May?
May fifteenth.
What's that for, Blaine?
That's for COAG. Remember, the community development, they want to have all entities of government that they wanted to have together to discuss.
That's right.
A plan for this area, for community development. And that is on the fifteenth.
The date also the time?
Okay, so if possible, we'd like to have you there. Uh, also, the smoking box car is having, after ten months of being open, they finally got it all together and they would like to have an open house at twelve noon on that date, uh, on the third of June. That's why that got mixed between the two. And, uh, I enjoyed the governor's visit that we had here in Morgan County. That's not often we get that opportunity, those of us that were with him. Um, also the grants, you understand that we got the two, well, we got one grant and the city got the other grant for the outdoor recreation. They got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the city to extend their Mickelson Mile and to do another part of a trail. And we got sixty thousand for the Nike, of course, up at East Ken. And, um, I went to UAC last week, they did talk a lot about SDRs in our USAC meetings and how we can put those, I mean, there's some certain, certain counties that have done that and had good results. So that's something we could, I'm gonna get more information on it and give it to you. And I've got plenty of things, but I'm not gonna tell everything. We'll do it another time, because it's getting late and past, past Matt's bedtime.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
I can do mine by email as well. There is one thing on here that, that I just want to pass along, and I know we've got lots of flooding, so it could very well affect this even more, but the Porterville Cemetery before Memorial Day, that road, I guess is County Road, I guess it's got some deep rats and they were wondering if we could grade it. I know the grader's up at Croydon right now, or is it?
Shaking down now, they brought it back.
All right, I'll just get ahold of, get ahold of him. And we've got, we've got a lot of problems with some of our roads that have been developed and I, I hope that they're not turned over to us yet. I hope we have an opportunity to, to, uh, so I'll try and get some addresses. I was just, um, doing a measurement up in the Cottonwoods yesterday, there's some crazy roads up there that are sinking.
Is it in that new section, just past that?
Over, they had the.
Yeah, that has not been accepted.
Well, and they, I thought that same section they tried to redo, I thought they already have redone it once, I think, and then it settled again, so I think this will be the third time.
We probably need to look at extending that warranty or something, I don't know.
I, I was noticing on some of these metals from Wasatch, because when I, when I did my project, they, I had to pay them to sit and watch me compact and put in engineered fill and all that stuff. Are they doing that? Because I, I noticed there's an allowance, it looks like, for that contingency and oversight. So I'm wondering if they're overseeing that.
They should be.
Do you know the answer to that?
They should be.
I missed the conversation, I'm sorry.
I think they, they, I don't know if they have someone there the entire time. I, I think they do call for the inspections at various intervals.
They've actually changed the normal procedure to observation versus inspection because it's just a, it's really tough. They need to be there, they need to be observing and documenting, but, yeah, they're supposed to be. If they're paid to do it, then they should be there, so. Construction, observation.
I know they sat there in their truck and walked around every.
So when, when a road is constructed, the engineer does the inspections?
And I, I think the question Matt's saying is, does it relate to how much he's having to pay for them to be there, right?
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, they, I see the contingency in there and the oversight, but if we're having roads fail, why if they're overseeing them?
Are you talking about roads that were recently constructed that are failing?
Yeah.
Um, well, those should be covered by the warranty bond. So if, if they fail within one year after the improvements are completed, then we can either force the developer to go in and do them, and if they refuse, then we cash the warranty bond and we make those repairs using their warranty bond.
I guess my concern is, is now that things are slowing down, these developments are gonna go past a year easily.
Right.
So are we, do I just need to drive the roads and tell you what the addresses are?
Um, if you see some failures, it, it would help.
Okay.
Just because of, you know, staff.
Yep, I'll do that.
I just heard him talking about redoing.
Well, and when you have a developer that's been in Morgan for a while and continues to be, I, I don't know if they're gonna pay a ton of attention to the one-year warranty versus saying, this is my name on this road and this development, I want to make sure it's right.
Well, they're incredibly frustrated. I, if you're talking about the one that they haven't, they're doing the third time.
Yeah, and that's.
I think they wish they knew what was happening.
It's sliding from underneath it then, huh?
Yeah.
As long as the buildings aren't moving, just the road. All right, we have a request to move into a closed session for the purpose of discussing three items, um, purchase or disposition of real property, character incompetency of an individual, and professional competency of an individual, and an update on pending litigation, pending or potential litigation. We have a motion to, to go into.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as second, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Fackrell.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson.